The You all set? Awesome. Okay, welcome everyone. This is a workshop of the Scarborough Town Council. Today is Wednesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it is five thirty P M. The topic of tonight's workshop is growth in Scarborough. John and I worked with town leadership and our planning department to kind of cultivate a two-part workshop to have a growth discussion primarily among the council, but also to with the purposes of being super informative for the public as well. And so tonight is the first of those two workshops that we have scheduled. And with that, I will turn it over to our planning director, Autumn Spear.
Presentations you will ever receive from me. But I really wanted to be able to go through each of the components that we use for our growth management strategy. So as Counselor Sider mentioned, this is step one. It's workshop one. It's the how we got here moment. We are going to review and discuss the timeline of the growth management processes of plan adoptions that we've had over the last sixty years. We're going to review a summary of current growth management program requirements. And we're going to review and discuss each of the components that the town uses, what tools we have at our disposal. And then we're going to wrap up with how those components are used for a case study. So we're going to give you a little bit of a real world example. Workshop two, that's scheduled for November nineteenth, and that one we're calling Where Should We Go? And that is where we really get more into the details of what our plans are recommending and strategies. We have comprehensive plan. We have the recently approved open space master plan. We have the vulnerability assessment that's before you this evening. And we also have a parks and facilities master plan. So that'll get a little bit more in the weeds and specific actions. And hopefully that will prepare you all as you go into your council goal setting for more of a background and as you plan for that and for the following. So this is a timeline and it starts in nineteen sixty. And as I started looking at our older comp plans and some of the relics that were left in my office when I got here. It was really interesting for me to see that the comp plans, we've had five comprehensive plan updates over the last sixty years. And they've sort of built on each other since the beginning. There are moments even in nineteen sixty-four where we're starting to see the word urban show up. And so we've been on sort of this track for some time. And I think this is a really good way to look at the different things that have happened and occurred over the last sixty years. Just to give some perspective to the residents and the council and the and the staff, quite honestly, because doing this, I found out timing and things that I wasn't aware of. You know, we had our first impact fees were nineteen ninety, and so we were ahead of a lot of the towns in the end state. I'm on an impact fee meeting group. And we talked today, and there are not very many towns that actually have impact. So we'll get into a little bit about that, but this is just, you know, for you to study and to contemplate as you move forward with these workshops and goal setting, just to give you some framework for what we're talking about.
I love this slide. What I think would help to maybe for us and the public is to know some key legislation that has also happened with L D thousand three, L D eighteen twenty-nine. And I don't know if there was anything else between now and nineteen sixty-five. I'm sure there were that were really influential in.
Something that really shaped or council decisions.
Oh, in nineteen ninety-one, the Housing Alliance was formed, and I'm told that was a state mandate. We also, SEDCO was formed in nineteen eighty-five, and so that's something that I wanted to add moving forward. And then I also received information that the sanitary district did a major expansion in the eighties. And that really opened up development. And so things like that. So I think we could add to this. It could be a really long timeline.
The other thing to put on there is the Discover Connector. I'm told that really served a large purpose in terms of expanding accessibility, obviously, and therefore growth.
Absolutely.
So this is just a high level growth management program laws. And down in the right corner is a link. You can you can find more information on the state statute. But a growth management program must include at least a comprehensive plan. We get asked that quite often. Do we have to have a comp plan? Do we have to have a land use map? And the answer is yes, to have our growth management program. And there are specific requirements that the comprehensive plan there's must check off. And those are some of the, you may recall, it took us a bit of time to get this last version through the state because we did it a little outside of the norm. And so we had to create Karen, much to her credit, created a lot of extra information to get it through these checkboxes. But the state reviews reviews those.
Oh, sorry. So now we're going to get into our town Scarborough growth management strategy. And we have really, I've grouped them into seven buckets, seven components, seven sets of tools that we use. And the first one is the comprehensive plan. The second set of tools really is our zoning. And then we have financing tools, committees and boards, conservation land bond, the rate of growth ordinance, and then moratorium as a tool. So these are the strategies that we'll talk about tonight. So as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan, the first one was in nineteen sixty-four. Really hard to see all these little highlights, but some of the interesting things are that we did start to talk about urban development very early on. In the nineteen ninety-four plan, they introduced the idea of growth areas. The two thousand and six plan reinforced those areas. And so this just has a few little snippets. I do have the original documents if you'd ever like to to read them in my office. But we have with this little short history lesson, we have been on this path some time. So the two thousand and twenty-one comp plan update is comprehensive plan. And as we go through this, you might see text in different colors. And so council, it's based on who has approval authority. So council is a shade of red, community process is this fuchsia color, and then we also have planning board and staff that you'll start to see a little bit around who has ultimate decision power in this. So the comprehensive plan update, it was an update to two thousand and six. It is the vision for the future of Scarborough. It's a community driven process that's ultimately accepted by the town council. Our comprehensive plan has five vision statements, and they're really it's the marsh, land use, diversity in housing, a strong economy, and a good transportation. Those are the five vision statements in a nutshell. We will talk more about the recommendations and strategies that come out of the comp plan in workshop two. So part of the comp plan also is there is a comprehensive plan land use map. And our conservation and land use map organizes our land use into categories. These land use designations are required. We do have to have these for the growth management law. Growth areas, we have to define some specific locations don't have to have growth areas, but we don't meet the criteria. So we have to have these growth areas defined. But in our defined growth areas, we have to establish development standards. We have to establish timely permitting procedures. We have to make sure that public services are available. And the rural areas, the opposite is true. We can adopt land use policies to discourage incompatible developments. So we have some some authority over that as well. And there's also provision for transitional areas, and so we can have those in our land use map. The majority of our land use map is in this pale green and dark green. And so the dark green is our resource protection zone, and then the light green is our rural residential. And you can see that the majority of the town really is in this rural residential. So that would be our limited growth areas. Then we go into the growth areas. The orange is a low to mod density non-residential. We have low to mod density residential corridor transformation. That's really the route one corridor between Oak Hill and Dunston. And then we have the village areas, and those are signified by the little dashes. We have a regional activity center. This is Scarborough Downs. And then a community activity center. And so that's Oak Hill and Dunston. And this has been primarily the way our comp plan has been laid out over time. It's just different versions, but this is, the vision has remained the same.
Autumn, when 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 we use the term growth area or as the state uses the terms oath area, is it fair to say that just the R F and the resource protection don't qualify and everything is considered a growth area?
It's a growth area, correct. So in summary, the comprehensive plan, it's a it's a tool that we have, we're required to have it so we can have this growth management strategy. It's community driven. It really does serve as the umbrella for everything and all the decisions. But it's also generic enough so that you can have some flexibility in it. It's been consistent for the last sixty-five years. There's been a consistent sort of vision with the five different plans that we have. And sometimes we do find that the goals, and we'll talk about that a little bit more next time, can compete. You might have competition for open space or density or trees or people in parks. So there's some competing priorities. So the next thing we're going to talk about is the bucket of zoning. And this one is really, it's really, it can get into the minutia. But this is where you see there's a lot of different colors. So again, you have the community and fuchsia town council on red, planning board green, staff in blue, and even zoning board of appeals. So this one touches everyone. So the zoning ordinance, our first zoning ordinance was established in nineteen seventy, and that was after our first comp plan. And so it's informed by the land use designations in the comp plan. We currently have twenty-five zoning districts and overlays. You all, the town council is the deciding factor, the deciding body for those districts and overlays. And the planning board essentially, what would you say? They make everything happen after you all approve the big bucket. So they are approving your conservation subdivision. They look at performance standards. They look at the density bonuses, wetland setbacks, parking requirements, all of those things with site plan and subdivision review. And then we have special exceptions and variances that sees zoning board of appeals signage, staff, and then contract zones come back to you. So that's another special zoning. So there's really a lot of pieces to this. And then the bottom right hand corner on a few of these, I have little asterisks that we'll talk about this at the next meeting, but this one is really going to be impacted by L D eighteen twenty-nine.
Is it fair to explain the planning board is really quasi judicial? So they have their they're narrow in their ability to make certain types of decisions, but they have a list. And that's the zoning ordinance and other.
And all the others, yes.
Right. Autumn, can you can you talk a little bit about what density bonuses and density factors are?
Sure. So in two thousand and seven, as part of the comp plan recommendations, we put into place T V C districts, and we also put into place density factors. And density factors treat one bedroom and two bedroom units just a little bit different than a three bedroom. So if you have a project and the density is five units per acre, that means you can do five three bedroom units per acre. But if density factors apply, then you can do ten one bedroom units and what, seven and a half or eight two bedroom units? So there's a ratio depending. And the understanding is that there's fewer people and there's less impact by the size or the number of bedrooms. So I put that into place in two thousand and seven.
Karen, go ahead.
So I understand that town council has the control to change zones, but are our hands tied if the comp plan says we are, you know, designated Dunston as a growth zone, and then the new council says we don't want it to be? Can they, do they have the authority to override the comp plan? Or does is that, you know, what who's in control there? Is that, do we have to change the comp plan first? Can we be like, you want to go back and edit it after we voted?
I don't know if you necessarily would need to change the comp plan. You would more than likely really want to change the. You would more than likely really want to change the zoning. You would never be able to say in an area like Dunston that has very intense zoning, it's rural. You can't, you wouldn't be able to do that. So I think, like we said, the comp plan really is generic enough that you can work within it. And so you would really want to focus your efforts, I think, on your zoning districts and then your design standards to get what you want. The comp plan, it's something you have to update every ten years or so, and it's really meant as a guidance. I'm just really struggling with talking, guys. Okay. Um, so.
There we go.
These are the impactful updates that I included. In two thousand and six, the comp plan implementation really spurred the TVC districts. And those are the districts that we have on Route One from Oak Hill to Dunston. And then the density factors, as I have mentioned, the crossroad plan development district was created in twenty thirteen. Light industrial district was in twenty thirteen, and the running hill districts were in twenty thirteen. So all of these zoning districts were really as a response to the two thousand and six comp plan. So in nineteen seventy-one, we got our first subdivision ordinance. And subdivision ordinance, again, it's a document that's approved by you all. And the applications are approved by planning board. The subdivision rules generally follow residential uses. We will sometimes see subdivisions in non-residential uses, maybe in an instance where there's ten lots that will be subdivided and then sold to different users for commercial projects. So we'll see a subdivision and a site plan process in that instance. Public notices required, street design is specified, and then the performance guarantees. That's where we start to see these for improvements in the subdivision. And then in nineteen eighty-five, we started with our first site plan ordinance and then commercial design standards in two thousand and one. And then you all may remember in two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-four, we slowly melded the two into one. So now we have one chapter four oh five B. And this is again approved by you all, but administered by the planning board and staff. It's required for all non-residential multifamily developments, public notices required. So this is where you get your requirements for site layout, landscaping, lighting, all of those sorts of things, and architectural standards. And we do have some placeholders for specific village design standards at some point in this document as well. So then, once you get through those, then we have building permits and certificates of occupancy. The fees again are set by you all, but the applications are administered and approved by the code enforcement officer. We are under the twenty twenty-one UBC compliance, and impact fees are paid with building permits. So in summary, zoning can be complicated in, in discussion. There's separate ordinances. There's a lot of, okay, this one says this, this one says this. We really should move towards a unified development code. Our comp plan does say that we should simplify our ordinances. Simplified doesn't mean making it easier or weaker. It just means making it more concise and easier to administer. So now we get into financial tools. So financing tools, we have impact fees, and impact fees are allowed by state law. And you can require them for any of these bulleted items on the slide. The three in bold are the ones that we use. And as I mentioned, we started using these in the early nineties. So we have roads and traffic. We have parks, recreational areas, and then school facilities. We did revise our ordinance last year, and we combined them all into one. And we did away with some of our older traffic impact fees. We have six roadway impact fees. I will say that the two new ones, the Payne Road, Gin Road, and then the Nunchucks River impact fee, we are only collecting at a forty percent rate because the impact fees were high. Those projects were big and they are expensive. So the roadway impact fees, these are approved through subdivision and or site plan process. So when a developer or proposal comes through, they submit a traffic study or traffic count, and we determine the impact fees based on their traffic and their usage throughout town. And those get paid with building permits.
Can I ask a quick question on impact fees? So going back to your previous slide, since we don't have authority over the sanitary district, can they still implement impact fees for solid waste? Are, I thought there was something on here for treatment, wastewater collection and treatment?
Yes, they do have fees.
They do have.
They do have impact fees, yes, yes.
It's called capacity reserve, yes.
Just worth noting, again, these all are established by ordinance by the council. With respect to the, the two newest road impact fees for Payne Road, that forty percent capture was a discussion among this council and a decision made by council. That's certainly something that can be rooted in this. We do expect to bring forward a new school impact fee updated, I should say, really pending the results of the election.
So the next one.
Oh, yes.
So relation to that, that's in forty percent was specific to a particular district, correct? And then that could be updated and changed, or that is for kind of the life of the development of that district?
Yeah, I think it was a value call, if you will, on the part of the council. As Autumn alluded to, when we looked at the project envisioned, it was twenty million plus, as I recall. It resulted in fees that were viewed by some to be too high and exorbitant. So there was a, a bit of an arbitrary decision chosen. Let's take forty percent of that fee. That number could be changed.
It's kind of similar to how for the school impact fees, how we landed on twenty percent of the school's total value would be driven by new development. So I think it's the same concept here of like, this road needs to be updated. It's not just because of new development. It is because it's, it's been needed for a long time. And so to say one hundred percent of this should be funded by new development when it's roads that are being used today, I think, at the time, right?
Well, the, the impact fee doesn't pay for the whole thing, so it's just the additional capacity. So the project is still, the impact fee is based on the additional capacity cost. So they're not paying for the whole project, even with these.
So it needs to be tied to a.
Yes, it has to be proportional in its application.
Just two, two final points. This is potentially affected by state laws, as noted at the bottom right-hand corner. There was some suggestion that we had to use them within a very short timeframe. I think the suggestion was ninety days or something like that. It's now encumbered within twelve months. Even that could be a stretch. Just imagine projects of this size and complication to be able to spend this money in that limited period could be a real challenge for us. Another brilliant point I was going to make, and you escaped me.
I'll come back to it. I have, I have one more question on about the committee you're serving on. Is there a charge essentially trying to look at removing impact fees or assessing the current state? Like, I'm just curious, like, what is, what is your sense of the direction that, why that committee formed?
So it's really to, I believe it's twelve forty-six, it's to provide feedback on what fourteen ninety-eight says. And one of the, as Tom mentioned, one of the statements says that impact fees must be encumbered within three hundred and sixty days. And it did originally say it had to be used, and that was the, oh no, what have you done moment? And it got changed, and the attorneys are not pleased with the word encumber. As a planner, like encumber, I look it up, seems to be okay. We have it segregated in an account when we get it, as soon as we receive it. But I think the purpose of the whole meeting is to make sure that we, we keep impact fees and that we make some recommendations, maybe for the state to provide some models or some checklist, if you will. What I'm determining, I was in the second meeting today, I'm determining there's a lot of, there's really a lack of knowledge on who actually has impact fees, maybe twenty-five to thirty towns. But impact fees is the overarching, oh my gosh, everything is so expensive. I have to pay all these impact fee cry from the development community. And so that was heard, and in response, you're perhaps not even doing anything to the communities that don't have valid impact fees.
Yeah, I think the policy objective, this was paired in part with some of the housing goals, if you will. Impact fees were viewed as one of the multiple barriers and certainly reasons that cost of housing is so, so great. The final piece, I'd say, in statute, it's very, it's expressly stated that impact fees cannot be used as a growth control measure. So we can't set them so exorbitant so as to turn development away. They really need to be tied. And I'm really proud of the work we've done to be able to justify why the fees are what they are. They are intended to make sure development is paying for their fair share, not to address necessarily all deals of the past. And the final point I'll just make, we had impact fees in place for over thirty years. Never were, were able to actually raise enough money in impact fees to do the, the project that was contemplated. We, we partnered with state money and some private money through the Downs T M P to actually do projects that were envisioned twenty years ago or thirty years ago. And that's likely to be an issue for us to, to do this. We might have to incur the expense upfront. We get the value of the improvement sooner and then pay, pay the debt service with impact fees going forward. That might be a strategy we need to consider.
So school impact fees are set up the same way. Sharon and Tom are working on revising those for the new, the school bond. But they're based on the type of residential dwelling that we have, and they are adjusted annually for inflation. And then recreation impact fees, this is tied to our Parks and Facilities Master Plan, and it's tied to the information in that plan for expansion or replacement, not general maintenance. And it has a ten-year plan, and it's four hundred dollars per bedroom. So it's tied to residential use. So then fiscal impact analysis, and this one, the next few, I really think Karen probably should talk more. But our fiscal impact analysis tools, they were developed in twenty eighteen as part of our comprehensive plan process. I believe that consultant brought that to the table. These are used for larger projects to better understand the town's costs and to provide the services. The services included in the analysis include schools, public safety, public works, library, and community services. And we revise those each year, and we have used those with credit enhancement requests in the past. And then bonds, Norm's not here, I'm channeling my interfinance director. But bonds are interest-bearing certificates. We use municipal bonds. The interest is free from federal taxation as well as state taxation. It yields generally lower, yields generally lower due to favorable tax treatment. We have general obligation bonds, revenue bonds, insured bonds, and the issuance must be approved by you all. And then we have the Tax Increment Financing District. This is a tool that can be used to assist communities to invest in affordable housing and economic development. It could be area or specific properties. It can be up to thirty years. The application is developed by the municipality, and it must be approved by D E C D or main housing. The funds can be used for infrastructure, roads, utilities, public safety, environmental concerns, streetscape, trails, et cetera. And the TIF districts are established by town council.
Just as an aside, I believe there's ninety-one active current TIFs in, in existence in Cumberland County. I, I, we can, I'm sure it gets statewide and, and tied by county statistics, but just to, it's, it's not uncommon for communities to be using this tool.
Twenty out of the, we have twenty-six communities now in Cumberland County. So twenty of them have, are actively using the TIFs to finance both public infrastructure and, and other types of investments.
I, I know this information is on the website. How many TIF districts do we have?
Three at this point.
Three, thank you.
And then the final for financing tools is the credit enhancement agreement. These are contracts where the municipality provides financial support to developers or businesses often using the TIF funds to help offset development costs. TIFs and CEAs are often used together. You do not have to have, to do a CEA, you have to be in a TIF district. You can also fund other projects, childcare loan programs, et cetera, with CEAs, and these also are approved by town council. So in summary, we are one of only a few municipalities taking advantage of impact fees. And I think it's really important that we maintain that ability through all the legislative cycles coming up. Impact fees are useful, but we have to make sure that we are assigning the cost appropriately with those. Our current fiscal impact analysis can provide some understanding of larger projects, but it is limited in scope for smaller. And TIFs and CEAs are both strategic tools to assist in public infrastructure development.
Just to put it in perspective, and I think this number is greater now, but it's very, I'm very comfortable in saying that a single-family home in Scarborough pays about ten thousand dollars in impact fees of one sort or another. And as we think about affordability, that certainly goes right to the bottom line. And, you know, we're naive to think that is, that cost is, is assumed by the developer that's certainly passed on to the consumer. So that, that's a difference, and some of our immediate neighbors don't have impact fees. So it's right out of the gate, an immediate differentiation between the two.
Autumn, you had referenced how many communities have TIF districts. I'm curious how many have CEAs on top of that.
I'd have to look. I only have the number of.
They were doing that on.
Yes. And, and we have a, we have a whole listing of them from the state, so we can go back and make that determination.
It would be good to know, too, like, what's an affordable housing CEA versus a economic development one?
I, I have the list from D E C D, so there, and that list does not include all of the affordable housing, but I'll double-check with mains, main housing, see if we can add them together.
Get that.
Okay. So our fourth tool, our component that we have at our disposal are committees and boards. And there are eighteen of them. There's no room for any more on the slide. So, but, uh, this is, these are appointed by you all, town councils. So we have committees for, for everything, but we use them for everything, too. So these are a tool that we have in our growth management strategy. And then the conservation land bond. We did the first land bond in two thousand. The voters have to approve this. You all approve the expenditures, but the parameters are established by the voters. And so in two thousand, we started with a million and a half, and our last one was at six million. PCLB was established in two thousand and one to evaluate and purchase these lands. And this is a really great program, I think, that's helping to achieve many of the goals that the town has. Uh, the rate of growth ordinance is another tool that not a lot of communities are using. And started in two thousand and one with the GMO, twenty twenty, and then twenty twenty-three, the, what were we called? The Tiger?
Tiger Team.
The Tiger Team. And so we, we've revised that. This is established by town council. It's used for residential site plan and subdivisions. And so our current version has the three areas plus the affordable for townwide. Site plan approval is issued by planning board, and then building permit, it's administered through the code enforcement office. So then our final component to talk about is the moratorium as a tool. This must be adopted by a town council. You have to show necessity that the moratorium must be needed to, to meet these requirements, to prevent a shortage or an overburden of public facilities because of the application of existing comp plans, land uses, ordinance, et cetera. You have to meet these requirements. You also have to have a definite term. It can't be more than a hundred and eighty days. So this is just a copy and paste out of the, the statute.
Just on that, on that point, I suspect we'll get into this more in the second workshop and maybe as you set your goals. This, this constantly comes up for obvious and good reason. We just want to make sure that we're not using it prematurely, that we're using it for the right reasons and strategically. We very well may find ourselves, once we better understand the impacts of LD eighteen twenty-nine, this may be a strategy that we want to use at that time. And we would advocate that while we have our, our ordinances in place and in effect until the effective date of eighteen twenty-nine, which is next June, let's not use this prematurely. Let's wait until and make sure we can use it strategically for the right reasons and for the longest period of time when we need it the most.
Autumn, or Tom, do you, in declaring or approving a moratorium, is there restrictions around at what point an existing project in the pipeline can move forward or not move forward?
Yes, there's a, there's a whole body of law and case law around this, but it's basically pending applications. So someone that is, and I don't exactly know the trigger point, but has submitted an application to us would qualify and, and be able to continue. You know, those are, those are kind of in transition. It would be anything received after the effective date of the, the moratorium. The other, the other practical thing about moratoriums is just that we have a, a very clear understanding of what we want to get done during that time. Hundred and eighty days, I think we all appreciate. Hundred and eighty days, I think we all appreciate in the municipal world, government runs quickly. So again, declaring it prematurely without a clear path and understanding what we want to get done, I think is, would be a mistake, and I'd caution you.
Aren't there in moratoriums retroactivity clauses though, where we can set certain dates? Can you, can you explain that a little bit, like what that means and how that applies to Larry's question?
Yeah, there are instances where you can impose a retroactivity component. I think that is very carefully and strategically worded, as you might expect, someone caught in that period of time will be very particular about all of those details. So yes, that's certainly possible, should there be a big project that you, you know, you want to stop to make sure we catch our breath and do something in the meantime.
In keeping with the theme of this workshop, which is a little more sort of backward looking, historically focused and how we got here, it might be helpful to have one or two examples when the council enacted a moratorium. What were the circumstances? What happened in the interim and, and sort of what was the outcome? I know we had a, I think a ninety-day moratorium that was focused on a specific area earlier this year. But it would be interesting to have a little more historical context on others.
We can, we can give you that. The two that come to mind, I think the two most recent were, was the light industrial you were referring to. In that case, I think it was a fairly clear understanding of the work that wanted to, we wanted to get done, and we were able to accomplish that. I think it was right to the wire, but we, nonetheless, we did it. I think it was an excellent use of moratorium, given the circumstance. The one part of that, as I recall, was around cannabis establishment.
Yep.
And again, it was identified a body of work that we wanted to accomplish. I think we may have had to extend that one to, to give ourselves a little more time.
We did.
But putting in place a, a, a much more elaborate set of regulations around that use.
It would, it would be interesting to, to understand what other communities have done, because I know Wells implemented a moratorium in a specific zone because of traffic congestion concerns. And so I don't know what they did as a result and what fixes they made and if they fixed it. So I think that would be interesting to understand what Wells did a little bit differently, because I think that's, when I think of like Dunston and that area, like I think that there might be some parallels between the issue at Wells and the issues we've heard in Dunston recently. So it'd just be interesting to know that as a case study.
Yeah, another example that was just in the last month, the town of Yarmouth imposed a moratorium, and that had everything to do with wastewater.
Yeah.
They had a particular pump station that was undersized, and so they needed the time to, to design the upgrade and actually start, start some of that work. I think there might be a ballot question in front of their voters in a couple of weeks on that matter, frankly. So, yeah, those are really good examples of things need to be done before more activity can occur.
So moving on, this is the craziest diagram that you'll probably ever see for the development processes, but this really sums it up. The comp plan is sort of at the top, and then it feeds down through zoning, site plan, impact fees, off-site requirements, where things are, are paid, and then how we use our financing tools. And that leads us into our case study. So we're going to just take a brief look at thirty-five Mussy Road. These are the Nunset River Apartments that everybody talks about. And I'm just going to go through the seven development components that we have in our toolbox for our growth management strategy and tell you how they applied and how, what that meant. So this particular site, it's an eight corners village area. Eight corners is, allows for a mix of uses for predominantly residential areas. And this particular zoning complies with comp plan. Very simple green check. The zoning is the town and village zoning, and again, this was created in two thousand and seven. This zoning is really about small, moderate scale businesses, a range of residential uses, including multifamily. It really checks all the boxes for your zoning district as well, so.
It's worth noting, I think Council Anderson will recall this, perhaps Council Seither, I see former councillor Hamill in the audience. This project has been around, at least in concept and now in Axel's development for better than five years. And for the first couple of years, the developer was interested in a contract zone to really build three buildings instead of twelve, is what they're approved for. And I think there was a height issue as well, and the council held firm and said no at least twice, and ultimately came forward complying with all the underlying zoning regulations. But I just wanted, you know, I've heard suggestions from members of the podium and the public that, you know, the council bends over and does all sorts of things. Well, this is a great example of not once, but twice the council said no, and stuck to its guns, and what we see is what is allowed under the zone.
Do you remember discussing this, John?
I remember.
I think this predates me.
I don't think I was, it wasn't when I was chair that this was something. I think this was when I first started.
Yeah.
A lot of times, and I think there were other instances where certain developers would approach to do contract zones. I can think of one in Enterprise Business Park. I think that one we actually did a workshop on, and we had said that year, I think we had voted as a council, we're not accepting contract zones, so we didn't move that one forward. And so I think that is kind of a policy decision that the council could make is like, we don't want to accept contract zones for new development, because typically when they have them, they're usually looking for variance within the zoning. The, the nice part of contract zones, I guess, or the benefit of it, if they do come forward is we do have the opportunity to really evaluate and push for public benefit. So I think that is the only thing. I know when we talked about C E As a lot, again, people were talking about public benefit, and there's no public benefit requirement for the E As, but contract zones, that's where they're, they're required to kind of articulate a public benefit in order to get that variance, and that ultimately is with the council to, to make that call.
Yeah, great distinction, and I think I probably misspoke. In the, in this instance, there were multiple conversations with council leadership and, and staff. And in those meetings, it was discouraged that they pursued, so they could have filed an application for contract zone. Thankfully, they never chose to. So, but it's equally effective. We discouraged the activity at the time.
For, for councillors that have not been part of a contract zone discussion, I'll just speak really briefly to my personal experience with trying to define public benefit is really, really challenging. What that means is vague, and what it means to each of us as individuals varies, and so I have always been very squirrely around the idea of defining what that public benefit looks like. And so in terms of using that as a an advantage of something like a contract zone application, I actually view it as, as something that is really difficult for the council to tackle.
Yeah, I think a great example of that is affordable housing, which I just recently grappled with. Some people might consider that a public benefit. Some people think otherwise.
And wasn't Marshew initially a contract zone? I feel like I should remember this. It started at the contract zone. We said no.
Formally, you said no.
And then they came back with what was within their zoning, but they still wanted a C E A, which we said no to as well.
Yeah, I know contract zones get a bad rap. I would always encourage you to keep the flexibility that contract zone affords. You know, the, the notion that our zoning ordinance is clairvoyant, that we've anticipated every good idea, every good project is just that's just not the reality. I think we can all point to the things that are a problem. So I would encourage you just to be open to a new and good idea that doesn't fit exactly in the box. You can always say no, and I think we've got a very good established track record of saying no when it doesn't make sense to us.
Okay, so moving on, I'm going to spend a little bit more time on this slide, because a lot of the questions and concerns and complaints that I hear have really to do with how the buildings are sighted on the property. And so the T B C three zone, it allows the use, but they can't have more than twelve units per building. So that's why they have the ten units in the clubhouse. So the density, again, it's five units per acre, but they do have density factors, so they were able to get the extra units that they wanted. The space in bulk. So this is the one that's a little trickier in these districts. When we put these districts into place, there was really a desire to have this traditional neighborhood design. The buildings are up close and oriented to the street, and there's a streetscape, pedestrian accessibility, street trees. And so there's a minimum and a maximum front yard setback in this district. And there are actually levels of, if you're going to have parking, you can only do the one row of parking. And so the way it is designed meets our zoning. It is, I call it the manifestation of our zoning district. It really is T B C three, and so it, there are multiple buildings, they're limited in footprint size, they are oriented to the street. And so they comply.
Can I ask the question?
Yes.
So when it comes, and maybe it's the site plan, when it comes to the trees that were cut down, were those trees cut down specifically to comply with our parking requirements, or did they cut down more trees than they needed to, to comply with our zoning?
So the trees have really, we don't have any protections in place for development on projects. So if you get a site plan approval, you have a limited, a line of disturbance, if you will. So imagine your fence, and it's literally a fence, and you can take down everything on that. And often our soils require pre-loads. And so, and grade changes and fill to be brought in or removed. And so the trees probably in most instances wouldn't survive if we didn't have very specific buffers defined. So they were within all of their requirements to be able to do that, to ready it for development. But as you can see on this, the little green boxes, the land, you know, out of the almost sixty acres, that's the corner that they developed on. And the benefit to that is we, they did not develop in the back, and they were able to ultimately skipping ahead, I don't want to get out of order. So this is just the site plan approval process, and they started in twenty twenty-two, and so you're just now seeing it. So it is a lengthy process, so it's not something that just happened. But they were able to, they only have seven point eight five acres of developed area, and so they really limited it. So that is, that's what our zoning district wants and want, and wanted, and that's what you get with this, but the you know, the, the negative to that is everything's close. We, we were talking about this. We're doing this, if you see us on Fridays, walking Route One. The planner is in town.
Please don't hit us.
Please don't hit us. Let us run across Route One. We're really talking about, you know, in the early stages of the comp plan, you can see that Scarborough really wanted to be like all of the other main communities with these traditional neighborhoods and downtowns, and so our zoning ordinance is really enabling that. But those things all happen over a period of time, sort of organically, and creating it sometimes can feel false over time until the rest of the area has caught up. So that, this is a really good example, I think, of the town wanted to be something, and then when it happened, it may not have been exactly how you had imagined, because the context is not there. The rest of Eight Corners is not caught up to this same type of development.
Yeah, if you look at the site development, undoubtedly, there could have been some additional tree saves, but when you look at the building footprints, all the required infrastructure, circulation, detention. You know, I'm not surprised that it's, you know, it's, it's, they had to clear almost eight acres of, of the property. Now there will be some landscaping that comes back, but certainly not going to replace the mature standard trees.
That's eight acres out of the fifty-six point four acre site, so, you know, they were trying to make it compact, so they didn't have to take as many trees.
And again, the contract zone request was to reduce from ten buildings to three to, to even have less impact. I think many folks that don't like this look, these buildings would have been bigger, taller, some might say uglier, but they would have preserved more of the natural setting.
Yeah, so basically, the, the law there, that there can't be any more development on the rest of the acreage there. That's all preserved, the tree, all the trees out back.
Correct.
Yeah, so that is a good thing, but I think it was a shock that it was so close to the road. I mean, you get residential, I know it's forty foot setback, and then I see these great big things, and they're like right on the street. And it just isn't in the town of Scarborough. Always was, no, you can't, you gotta have a setback from the street. And the one main reason for that, I think, is if you ever have traffic problems, you may have to widen the road or something. And now you've got a building, and I think that's why way back, they had these setbacks, as they realized, we may have to widen, like Route One. Route One was a two-lane highway, and then they had to move houses, they had to move all kinds of things to be able to make it a full lane. And so I think they realized that we gotta have setbacks from the road, you know. And then people see this built like this, but the advantage to doing that is it moves it close to the road, keeps the land in back preserved and the trees preserved. On that, a lot of people didn't like that they cleared, they called it clear cutting. They cleared a lot of area. I would just, you know, I would almost think it's a better thing to do. They were very tall pines, and if you left them really close to the building, now you have a storm, and one goes over, and it goes into cars, goes into buildings, and there's property damage then from the trees. I know with me, you know, I don't want people telling me I can't cut a tree in my yard, because this particular tree is leaning hard towards my house. It's going to destroy it if it goes. I want to cut it down. And I don't want the town coming and telling me, nope, you can't cut any trees. So this is something that is going to be coming up, I think. And, you know, we gotta watch it. We gotta think of all of the different angles and why. I mean, there's, there's, there's always a good for doing things, but then there's a negative because of it, and we have to be very careful of that.
I, I do think it's important too to look at the zone holistically though, because when we look at this particular property in a vacuum, it is shocking, but when you look at the rest of the buildings in the zone, they're pretty similar. Like they are more industrial, but they're also pretty close to the road. And then when you keep driving down Mussy on the opposite side, there's things built up to the road. So I think it's like, it is definitely shocking. Like I was shocked when I first saw the trees come down and how close they were. I had that reaction, but I understand that the vision for the zoning, that, that that was the vision. And again, maybe that's no longer the vision, and we can tweak that, but now we have a property that's right there that we can't really move.
Yeah, again, I think maybe if we had have thought it through more, where there is so much land out back, maybe we would have pushed, told them, you know, maybe there should be something in the zoning to say, yeah, let's have the setbacks more in this situation. Because it's so much land preserved in the back, and, you know, and again, it would only be, I mean, you know, I, I don't know what the setback is now. I'm going to say ten or twenty feet. I don't know what it's, I'm estimating, but if you only went twenty more feet, it isn't that much, you know. It's out of that great big acreage to, to move that whole thing back a little more. You know, especially at Eight Corners where it's such a traffic problem. I don't know what in the future will happen come up, but there may be a traffic study to say, well, if we could widen the road, we could fix this, but, you know. Just, you know.
I think the other complicating factor might be too, like, this was a specific property that was that large, but I'm sure there are other plots of property that are not that large, that again, trying to think consistency and fairness, like if you move it too far back, there might be some properties that they have no room to build because it's a smaller, but, and so I think that's the, you gotta look at the whole zone, and you gotta look at the properties and how they are to, I guess, try and best estimate, you know, what makes sense.
Well, it really, it depends on what you want the outcome to be. In this instance, you could have had the same amount of apartments on the same amount of land with a tree save in the front and a visual buffer with taller buildings.
Yeah.
And those, you know, there's different ways to do it, and it really depends on what the desire is, on how designed. So back to earlier, when you asked about the comp plan, it's the zoning ordinance, but it's the design standards that really can make things have a different impact. So the next one, this is the financials of this project. So impact fees, they paid two hundred, almost two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in impact fees for school, rag and traffic. They did also do off-site traffic mitigation. I'm guessing probably around two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements in the area. They did not receive any special financing, C E A or anything. It's all market rate apartments.
Sorry, sorry, you keep getting interrupted, but I think it's good for the flow of the, of the discussion. While we're on this theme of, of, you know, the financials, so to speak, one of the, one of the things, one of the, to me, anyway, when the, the other big thing we've heard about this project beyond the sort of the, the scale and how it feels on the street is that it's not affordable. And my understanding is that there, there was never, that was never the intent here, right? These are market rate apartments.
Right, correct.
I just wanted, wanted to be clear on that.
Yep.
Thanks.
And so the total value of the construction is almost nineteen And so the total value of the construction is almost nineteen million dollars, and so they paid. Um, probably with offsites, about three percent of their total costs for improvements and impact fees. And then committees and boards, easy planning board, you know, reviewed the site plan review and had the approvals. And then the conservation land bond is not technically conservation land bond because we didn't have to use funds. But they, we did receive thirty three acres transferred to the Scarborough Land Trust. To become part of Warren Woods as an outcome of saving that part of the, the project. So again, this property, um. Back in this area. My mouse is not keeping up, but.
My recollection that is a lot of that was all wetlands and not buildable, correct?
Correct.
I don't, was that a contingency of site plan approval, or that was just because it was not really buildable, it was just?
I was not here when all of that, but I, my understanding is it was probably a little bit of both. Um, but we have. Recommended people since I've been here on projects that I've personally been involved in, we have recommended people reach out to Scarborough Land Trust. When we have properties that can't be developed on, and rather than it be in an H O A or just in, you know, a hold on somebody's lot. We'll, we'll ask them to work with the land trust to, to add that to their uh, property.
This developer, this developer also sold a smaller parcel, carved a parcel out, if you will, uh, it's become the. Overflow or adjunct parking lot for none such um, restaurant or brewery. Uh, and that was, uh, that was at our suggestion as well. Uh, there, that was very. Clear to us that that was a problem from almost the day they opened. And uh, the on-street parking was just not a long-term solution, so we're pleased that they were able to come to terms and, and we have what we have today.
So and then the final um, rate of growth permits, they, they did span two systems because of their timing, so. They took advantage of both, um, but they're in area two, and they received their last twenty four under this new system. For, for greater growth permits. So that is a recap, um, and a recap of our growth management strategy. We have these, you know, seven components, tools. Buckets of things that are at our disposal to use. Um, we looked at how we've gotten here over the last sixty years, we looked at each of these. We really, it's important to understand the town is utilizing all of the tools that we have. We are. I can't find anything that we're not using that is at our disposal that we could be, you know, the impact fees, the rate of growth ordinance, not everyone does that. Um, so I would say that had we not had those things in place, our growth would be even more. Um, substantial than what it is. But essentially, all of these ordinances, all of our conservation efforts, all of these strategies work together. Um, by that crazy slide with how everything kind of happens and correlates and how the sausage is made. Um, our next steps for uh, the workshop, we'll have number two, the where should we go workshop on November nineteenth. And as I mentioned when we started, we'll get more into the specifics of recommendations and strategies and, and hard decisions, especially around. Vulnerability assessment and, and things of that nature. And then we'll also begin to discuss a review, the state law changes, specifically eighteen twenty nine, and what those implications might mean for us. And how many things may not even be in the town's control any longer.
Yeah.
Um, and then hopefully that'll get you to have a great time at council goal setting.
I, I think, again, when I think to of your um, timeline slide. What would also be helpful to think about is like any con- major contract zones that were approved that impacted. Our rate of growth, I think specifically of Beacon at the Gateway, which I think was a contract zone. So part of the challenge when that happened was because I think there were so many built there, because I think they got a waiver from our rate of growth ordinance. That. That factors into our history for when we calculate it. So I think that, that is a challenge. The other piece that we didn't talk much about, but I think is important in terms of how we got here too, was our. Original rate of growth ordinance, when I was on council when I first joined, allowed for fractionalization of. Building permits as part of our rate of growth ordinance, which is what kind of allowed for more apartments to come out. So the first iteration of the rate of growth ordinance changes, we removed fractionalization. Then the second round, we got like a little bit more specific in terms of where and what types and number of bedrooms to help with like. School impact and other things. So I do think there were things that were policies in the past that also kind of led us to where we were. And I think contract zone approvals and fractionalization really contributed to kind of how we got here. Which I think have since been, at least the fractionalization has been addressed. Um, but the, the reality of that is it allowed for a boom of apartments in Scarborough that ultimately impact. What we can set as our minimum for rate of growth.
Uh, I had a question, but first I just want to say, I get the impression that the impact fees are not keeping people away from developing here, where, you know, I don't think it's been a deterrent.
Right.
Um, when I look at the timeline for our comprehensive plan, it's har- it's hard not to notice that we were at two thousand six, and then we didn't do a new one to two thousand twenty one. And I feel like the two thousand twenty one is a little deceiving because I don't, I don't think like the community involvement was in two thousand twenty one. I think it was more back in like two thousand sixteen, seventeen. So for, in my mind, it's like we're, we're at the point where now we need to be revisiting it again. Um, because I know it took a couple of years to get there. And so I think. It's like we had a really long gap and then we just, you know, had all those meetings. And then I feel like all within that time, our growth just like exploded. And then we, we accepted a comp plan. Um, and so I don't know what our next steps plans are for our comp plan. But if we're supposed to do it every ten years, I would imagine we're gonna be revisiting it again soon.
I will say as someone who was involved with that comp plan, as a member of the long-range planning committee. Others can attest to this, that, that the council did multiple reviews of that and had some feedback. And there were some modifications that were made. I mean, I think it's, it's always gonna be a moving target. I mean, I, I, I take your point, but. Um, I don't, I don't think that it invalidates it, that things have changed since then. I think there are some important principles there. And I think, you know, what, what uh, Autumn was describing in terms of, you know, the, the case study at eight corners. And terms of, and public perception in particular, really gets to one of the, one of the other inherent challenges, which is that there's. Always gonna be at, at least a little bit of a disconnect between what the town, quote unquote, the town decides it wants to do and what it wants to be. And how certain parts of the population respond to that, especially as things are changing. Um, and so, you know, there, I, there's always, there are decisions that are made and goals that are set that theoretically. Um, capture the overall will of the town. Um, but when that, when it comes to specific developments. There's a large percentage of the town, there's no way around it, that just isn't paying attention a lot of the time. And so then they, they see something and they may not realize what the underlying zoning is. Um, or how long that's been in the pipeline. That's another challenge here, the lead times involved, and that was illustrated in one of those graphics as well. And I will say that it is important, and I think as we look at where to go from here, we need to really make sure that we bear in mind that. Um, you know, developers slash owners, some of whom are from, from outside of town, some of whom are just people who live in town and have property they want to develop. Um, look to these regulations and, and the zoning ordinance and, and other, these other tools for guidance. And it's important that there be some, some basic level of predictability, that there isn't a perception that. Every time there's a new council, we're gonna do a one eighty. I'm not suggesting that would ever happen. But I, I do think it's, it's important that, that we think about the importance of kind of transparency and, and predictability.
Great.
Yeah, John, and then go.
Um, I have a question, Autumn. So when it comes to changing zoning as a means to address. The rate of growth, like what are the, the levers that we have? Besides, like, obviously, one is what's allowed there, like we could change what's allowed there. Um, but what are the other things? Is it like, amount of bent buildings per acre that we could change? And the density factor, like, I'm just curious, like, if you were to think of T V C and how that's designed today. And say, the community wanted to pull back a little bit on the vision, not eliminate it, but like pull back a little bit. What are the specific things in the zoning that we would look at to kind of make those adjustments?
Density factors and density, but I will say, uh, and we'll get into this next time. With L D eighteen twenty nine, if that doesn't change, we won't necessarily be able to do that. So we're going to be talking more about how are we going to make sure that what we get looks at least the way we want it to look. Because if you have water and sewer, even if you are outside of a growth area. We can't require a lot greater than five thousand square feet. And on the five thousand square foot lot, we can have four units. And one of the units can have an A D U as well, and they only have four parking spaces. So that's a whole different, like normally I would just say, oh, we could just delete density factors, and then you could really probably slow things down. But this brings in a whole different, um, a whole different set of issues.
But do we, do we have zoning in town that is on par or greater than what L D eighteen twenty nine is doing? Like, it sounds like there might be some places where we're actually lower, where it's gonna go up, but do we have some where it's higher? Where we could bring it on par with L D eighteen twenty nine?
Well, so T V C, it's five units per acre, um, density factors, you're looking at ten units per acre, twelve fifty. Twelve hundred and fifty square feet, it's more like thirty units per acre.
Okay.
So where.
So even in our highest density area, T V C, it still is almost double.
It's still substantial. And I'm not even sure it can be buildable. I don't think they've even gone through, typically when you write it ordinance, you. You wanna make sure it's actually buildable when you're trying to encourage density. And I don't even think if people can necessarily probably get to that with height restrictions. Uh, so height is really important. Um, I can't tell all of my secrets, but.
When you said, when you said it's more what it looks like, is that the design standard?
Really is, it's more about, you know, I get the impression from the town and that it's really. It's more about an experience and about what the town is perhaps used to. And what we wanna see and what uh, the residents, and so there seems to be some, some trade-offs. If you can keep your trees and your corridor views, is density behind that okay? Um. It's commercial okay, but it's not as impactful with large signs, that sort of thing. There's just a lot of different ways to, to approach it.
Can we do a tree protection ordinance or ask Councilor Shoup leaves? I know it's a fun thing. But I do think it's something that I know she's brought up, that we're not necessarily debating tonight with the tree care ordinance, but. It sounds like we could figure out how to protect more trees as well within new development.
You certainly could. You could start with uh, commercial development. You know, this is the, the first step. What's before you tonight for the tree care ordinance is for our public rights of ways and public parks. Um, but then a next step could be just perhaps to commercial and, and multifamily development. You probably wouldn't want to get down to the, to the single family level to get started. Um, but you could definitely take a look at it.
Bill, we skipped over, I'm sorry, John, are you, you?
Well, I just think, I think it's really important to say again, what you said about L D eighteen twenty nine, in terms of. What levers we no longer will have, because again, for the public here, I think it's important. That they understand that and also contact their state legislature, especially if they're not happy with this. Because again, it's a little bit out of our hands, and I do think part of our next steps on growth is like. Do we as a council want to take a position on L D eighteen twenty nine? I know other communities like Wyndham have sent.
Hmm.
Letters to the state saying that they're not happy and, I mean, I think it's not to have a contentious um, relationship with our legislatures. But to like really take a strong position about what this law means for our community, given what we've been hearing from our residents.
Well, especially understanding that the purpose of the law changes is to encourage affordable housing, but there's nothing about affordable housing in the law. And so there's no, um, maybe it's implied or it intuitively will happen, but it's not a requirement, so. Yeah, Bill.
Uh, you know, I think all of us have observed the public perception of, of. Runaway growth that, uh, over the last several decades, Scarborough has grown enormously. Uh, and yet what you've painted a picture of is a very active. Process of using the tools that are available to a municipality to manage growth. Is the. Wh- where's the disconnect here? Where's, is there, is it that the public simply? Like us, hasn't had that sort of presentation to lay it all out.
I think it's possible, but it's also possible that people don't realize what a fantastic location this is. And you can't change that with any rule. I, I.
I thought that.
Or you're, you have a turnpike, you're in between two major cities, you have a coastline, it's. It's beautiful. You have these things that people just naturally want to, to be at. Maine is also a draw. What is the number four, three or four on the safest place? And the safety includes your lifestyle and safety. I mean, um, so there's just so many of those things.
I think, Bill, the, the other question on that is this kind of, it's cumulative, where um, in. Nineteen seventy five, the population was ten thousand, and twenty years later, it was fifteen thousand. But it was still very rural and there was a lot of open space. And so it's, you know, as you, as that population goes up each time, it's actually been relatively consistent. Um, and, and each twenty years is about five thousand in population, but the space is getting used up, so it feels denser, it is denser. And so I think that's rightly so, is where the concern is becoming more, um. Adamant that, that we need to make adjustments.
And we're also in a growing region, so things are happening all around us that inevitably affect us.
One, one question we often get from folks is, um, Cape Elizabeth seems to be. Managing growth just fine, why can't Scarborough? And I think the response to that I always give is kind of what you said, Autumn, like. A, a little bit of it is, but they're a very different location, they don't have the roads. Um, but also they don't have the history in nineteen sixty four where they. Decisions were made that, to your point, became cumulative over time that have gotten us to where we are. And those, those were choices that were made. That have continued to be reinforced every time there's been a comp plan, whereas Cape Elizabeth probably has had the same comp plan and zoning. Since nineteen sixty four. And so, again, like I think that's, when I'm hearing people compare us to them, I, I, I don't feel like it's apples to apples. And I don't think that we can do what they've done because they made those choices and have stuck to them. Whereas our choices were probably a little bit more progressive, at least as it related to growth.
That's true.
That's fair.
I think it's also, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Also fair to say and important to acknowledge that, in addition to the, the point about the perceived impacts being cumulative. But there have been in, in the last few years, a couple of very high-profile, very impactful developments, like the downs. And so I, I, at least my perception as someone who's kind of lived that is that. Um, that really colors a lot of, a lot of what we, what we, what we see in here and what, what people are experiencing. Um, and so I, I, I think that is a, that is a fair point.
Just if I could add just a, a little, it's a commentary to uh, Councilor Shoup's point about the time. That passed between the O six plan and then our update in twenty one. Uh, I happen to, that kind of spans my tenure here. I started in two thousand eight. I remember being struck and really impressed with how dedicated the town was to implementing that O six plan. Uh, I see members in the audience, Councilor Fellows was part of it as well. We had a group of really dedicated folks. And outside consultants to uh, almost page by page, go through the comp plan and methodically implement that. And I would say that that O six plan was really revolutionary. It really introduced a lot of these concepts that we're now living with. And so there was a lot of change as part of that. And that spanned all the way into, I think, the last ones, as I recall, were Running Hill and the Crossroads uh, district. Those were kind of the final pieces. It took a better part of ten years with constant, consistent work. To implement that and to be in a position of saying, okay, now it's time to revisit. Uh, and this most recent rendition really kind of just stands on the shoulders of that. It's not nearly the sort of heavy touch. Um, required as part of this update that there was with that one. Um, and I, just as an aside, I don't exactly know the timing, but I know the town was sued as part of the Great American Neighborhood. Back in the early two thousands, and part of the cornerstone of that suit was that we had a comp plan, uh, and their plan. Essentially was uh, executing that, and we had not done the implementation to put the proper zoning in place. And I, I think there was a lesson learned, and that's, I suspect, one of the reasons the town was so committed. Uh, to actually implementing the plan that I had in place.
I, I want to thank Autumn and Karen for joining us this evening. Uh, I'm sure that the council and the community is very much looking forward to the second part. Um, and really did. um, and really digging into the future um planning discussion that the council will engage in, so thank you very much. At this time, I will go ahead and take public comment. If there's anyone wishing to make public comment on this portion of the workshop, I'll do so for about 10 minutes. Um, and then I will give us a little bit of a break before our business meeting. And then if you wanted to make comment, but you didn't get a chance, then you can certainly do that during the um general public comment of our business meeting. So if there's anyone who would wish to um make public comment, please approach the podium. Welcome.
I'm Sue Hamel, and um I want to kind of second what Karen Shoup said about the, the input, the work on the 20, the most recent update of the comp plan. It did start in 2016, and that's when the public was highly involved with the, I'm not going to say the word. Can't say that. But uh, and, but the 2006 plan that was done, I think Sylvia Most was involved in that plan. And it became kind of a textbook for the state in how do you put together a really great comprehensive plan? And um, it was, it was an amazing document. A couple of things that I, I just want to say about, you know, we're dealing with all this growth and um, how do we get the main turnpike to stop collecting tolls in Southern Maine? Get the traffic off of Route one, it would solve, you know, 90% of our, of our problem. Just remove the tolls and, you know, all the traffic would, a lot of the traffic would move. And then the other thing is, how do we, how do we get more affordable housing? And um, one thing the state could do is to impose a big tax on any property being purchased that by anyone who will not be using it as a year round resident, residents. And that tax money all goes into a fund dedicated to affordable housing programs of various kinds. Because, you know, the state is, is promoting affordable housing, yet as we learned from South Portland Housing, there were what, 31 projects that applied? And only, you know, seven were going to get funded? So let's put some money, you know, put some money behind what the state really does want. Thanks.
Thanks, Sue. Anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Good evening, I'm Alan Paul, and in full disclosure, I am currently a member of Long Range Planning Committee and SEDCO. I've also spent the last 20 plus years on various committees around the town. So I've experienced a lot of conversation and discussion about growth and about traffic. Um, many of the items I wanted to talk about tonight have already been mentioned, I'll skip over those. Um, but one of the things I just want to make, I guess, just a statement about the state currently mandates how many building permits that we must execute on it on an annual basis. And there's a formula that they, that they use in order for us to have to do that. So the last two comprehensive plans, 2006 and 2021, addressed that and looked at the fact of trying to keep growth in specific growth areas. And in order to be able to accomplish some of the things that are facing us with the continued growth in Southern Maine, where have been the largest growing community in Southern Maine for several years. I feel that we're going to have to address density. And the best way, in my opinion, to address density in our growth areas is to take a look at building height and the amount of stories that we're going to allow. I don't think we're ever going to hit the numbers that we're going to have to admit, have to hit moving forward if we don't consider that. The other thing that I think density will help accomplish is that if we can get enough people, we can better justify some form of public transportation, which could also ease some of the traffic issues that we have. So I think we need to improve density in our target growth areas for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hello, my name's Tammy Mitten, I've been a resident since 2018. I've been looking for a property for myself, uh, haven't been successful in finding what I'm priced out. I am now looking in Maryland. Um, my sister lives on the eastern shore, and I would encourage all of you to look at Maryland's critical zone law. Uh, I think there are lessons there that you could learn from it, that you might be able to apply on a town level. The state has identified those areas that are critical to the health of the Chesapeake Bay. In our case, we have marshes, and that's our brand. Scarborough is the town of the marsh. Um, so you want to protect your brand, and that's got to be done through zoning and land use planning. I also want to mention that I, when um, I have, I try to keep up on newspaper articles, and I remember reading one letter to the editor that talked with praise about the King of Prussia development in Pennsylvania. And that they were, that letter writer was hoping that, that we would wind up with something like that in the Downs. I grew up down there. I left that part of Pennsylvania because of the growth and the rapid development. So I warn you to continue to be wise as you go through this process, use all those levers, use all those tools. So speaking as someone who can't find an affordable house here, I would want growth, but also speaking as somebody who comes from a, from a, from a county in Pennsylvania that grows so fast, is unrecognizable to me. It's a challenge.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? With that, I will go ahead and adjourn the workshop, and our regularly scheduled business meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Uh, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Scarborough Town Council. Today is Wednesday, October 15th, 2025, and it is 7:00 PM. At this time, I would like it if you would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Tody, could you call the role, please?
Counselor Jordy?
Here.
Counselor Kane?
Here.
Shoup?
Here.
Counselor Fellows?
Here.
Here.
Counselor Chairside?
Here. Item four on our agenda is general public comment. If there's anyone uh either in attendance or online that would like to make public comment on something that is not on our agenda this evening, now is the time to do so. Please approach the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Denise Hamilton to Rad Road. Um, I'd like to address a few points tonight that reflect inconsistencies in how the town ma- matters are being handled and a growing concern about transparency and accountability. When landscape contractors' use was introduced as an allowed use in the RH LI and I districts, the process was straightforward. Went before long range planning several times, ordinance committee, town council for first reading, followed by town council public hearing, second reading with vote, even though I expressed exclusion of the performance standards for the light industrial. However, when I raised the issue that the performance standards were not being applied to the light industrial, which was an oversight on the town's part, the process changed. It went to ordinance, then to the town council for first reading, but now it's being sent to the planning board for the public hearing before returning to town council for second reading and vote. Given that this is a correction of a town oversight, I'm confused why the public hearing isn't being held before the town council consistently. consistent with the prior process. Changing procedures like this creates unnecessary confusion for taxpayers and gives the impression that the town selectively alters processes depending on the issue or who raises it. At the last town council meeting, when I raised Scotto Hill potential closure, John asked Tom whether the budget could be modified to reallocate funds to fix Scotto Hill Road. The answer was yes. So if that option exists, why hasn't it been explored or even mentioned in the town manager's report over the past several months? The failure on Scotto Hill happened around budget season. Adjustments could have been initiated months ago. Instead, the issue continues to linger without a clear plan, which gives residents little confidence that infrastructure priorities are being managed proactively. This issue affects all taxpayers in Scarborough, not just those on Scotto Hill. Also, what grants have been looked into that could replace the failed culverts? I'm seeing a few that this may qualify for. It's been now two weeks since the last meeting. When I asked, how long was it going to take to not only fix, but simply clean up the corner of Scotto Hill and Higas? Tom stated the cleanup could be done right away, but repairs would take longer and require an outside contractor. Yet, two weeks later, there's still a mess. This isn't a major project. It's a basic maintenance issue that should have been addressed by now. And frankly, if this were on the east side of Route 1, I doubt it would still be sitting in this condition. Residents deserve consistent attention and responsiveness from town leadership, no matter where in Scarborough they live. And in short, we need consistency, accountability, and follow-through for both staff and leadership. When processes shift or action items linger without visible progress, it erodes public trust, and that's something this town cannot afford.
Thank you, Denise. Anyone else wishing to make public comment?
I know there was a chance to make public comment at the workshop, but I didn't. I missed the cutoff, so, but if I may. Don Hamel, I live on Bay Street in Pine Point. First of all, I want to acknowledge the great work that was done by Adam Spear and staff, you know, and incredible summary of, you know, our journey, our growth journey. And if there's any question about, you know, the complexity of modern-day life, I think you probably got a feel for that just by listening to that, to that. The other thing I would say is I know the work that you do and the 50-page workshop agenda and the 100-page town council agenda have to be some kind of record, so. But that's just a fact of what we're dealing with. I want to offer some suggestions for, leading up to the November 19 meeting on growth. You know, we're a large enterprise, okay? A large, complex enterprise. We have an $8 billion balance sheet. We've got a budget of $150 million. Gross. That's a big enterprise. Large enterprises use a thing called environmental, social, and governance, ESG guidelines, for determining priorities. They use that as an organizing principle for setting priorities for their strategies and their operations. I suggest we consider taking a variation of that and trying to apply that to the challenges we are having in managing growth. The other thing I wanted to point out is that half of the battle is also looking at what the barriers are. This LD 1829 is a disastrous piece of legislation, and I would like someone to come here and explain that to us. I caught a glimpse of a pretty learned review of that that was done by JP Cogs, our own Phil Saucier, town attorney, and Tom Hall participated in that. You know, I would love to have those folks come back and try to conduct something for the council for us to get our heads around what the heck we can't do. I think that is a disastrous piece of legislation. But I'm not sure there's much we can do about it. The other thing I would just say is that there is this concept of meaningful public participation. That's something that's required by statute and also by, for municipalities. That means the public needs to have an opportunity to meaningfully participate in the public process. And I reject the comment that was made that they just don't understand. They just don't get it. Very successful companies and very successful enterprises all over the world rely on frontline feedback from their customers. We should view our, everyone in our town in the same fashion. And that is something I think we can work on and try to take and use that to our advantage. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else wishing to make general public comment this evening?
Richard Hayes, Martin Avenue. I recently attended a Housing Alliance meeting, and it was interesting and disturbing to me. I don't know any of the gentlemen or people that are directly on the committee, but they talked about the reasons the Marshview project failed. One gentleman said it was because of a small group of vocal people. Someone else suggested that it was a timing of year because in the summer, there's more traffic than in other parts of the year. I was amazed that nobody addresses that project was a bad project in a, maybe a good project in a bad location. There are a whole bunch of issues with that project, none of which were brought up in that Housing Alliance meeting. The marsh is too close, as far as I'm concerned. Phillips Brook is right behind the project. Traffic in that area. The right turn. In and out only. There were so many issues of why that project failed. And it was really amazing to me that no one on that committee talked about those issues. They talked about things that had absolutely nothing to do with the failure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Jim Perchard, Maple Leaf. I attended last month's Finance Committee meeting where the stormwater fee was discussed. The counselor who spotted the item gave a presentation explaining motives for introducing. It was to have nonprofit pay their fair share. Then the counselor went on, complained about cutting trees, adding impervious surfaces. Went on then to saying that it costs $100,000 to maintain the vacuum truck. And suggested that there was four other communities in the state that had implemented stormwater fees. When the council stated the purpose on the agenda, it was ensured nonprofit organization could contribute appropriately in lieu of taxes. It may have misled taxpayers, thinking that only the nonprofits would be affected by the stormwater fees, which is not right. Stormwater fees cannot be used in lieu of taxes. In regards to cutting trees and added additional parking, the counselor is also the chair of the ordinance committee. And if I remember correctly, the parking spaces are based upon the square footage of the building. If she saw that as a problem as the chair of the ordinance committee, did she ask for clarification, ask for an amendment? We don't know. She didn't say whether or not it was. I'll shorten it up. The four communities that she mentioned was Bangor, Augusta, Lewiston, and Portland. They all have combine systems. Scarborough does not have a combined system. The overflows all dump into a body of water, rivers, streams, Costco bag. I did not look to see if Bangor or Lewiston or Augusta were under court orders to create the fund, but I know Portland was. They are currently under a court decree. By withholding this information, it was not disclosed at the public meeting of the Finance Committee that this information was there. And given the circumstances around that after the meeting, I'm calling on the counselor to resign immediately. The town deserves better. It appears that she had a personal agenda on this and was only providing certain information. This is not right. We have trust issues in this town now. This issue only feeds to that mistrust. And I think it's time that the council starts giving true, accurate information and start working on building the trust. As a person that spent 18 months on the school committee, building committee, I received a lot of comments about trust. I think you ought to put all this other stuff aside, and you have one goal at the next council is to how to build the trust with the taxpayers. So I am calling on the counselor to resign. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perchard. Sir, anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Hello, Nina McKee, 309 Black Point Road. In total respect for the last speaker, I just want to tell you that I, little old me, trust you. And I do think that you do the best job you know how, and it's tough. So in all respect, I just disagree. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you for that. My name is Stephen Zamorowski. I live on the southwest side of town. My children and grandchildren also live in town. I was the person who made the comment. I'm on the Housing Alliance. I'm also on the Parks and Land Conservation Board. I made the comment at that meeting of 100 people, a relatively small group of people. 100 people is a meaningful group of people, but it doesn't represent the majority of the town. When people get up here and make comments and speak for the town as a group of 100, 150 people, that's not appropriate. I should have stood up during some of those meetings and gave my opinion. I did not. So the council was left thinking that was maybe the feeling of the town. I supported the Marshview development because it was a good thing for the town. With everything else in consideration, we're in a complex world here. We have state, federal, and county regulations. We have different residents' needs and wants, and we have a free market economy. A modest-sized elderly, seniors, I'm in that category, senior housing facility, to me, would have been a good solution for the town. And it's probably going to be better than what's going to end up there now. We're probably going to get a Dunkin' Donuts drive-thru or a large, single-family development, single-family housing development project there, which will impact the traffic more, you know, cost more to serve that, that potential development. So yes, 100 people is a small group, but a meaningful group, and they were vocal and organized, and I applaud them for that. But I would like people to stand up and give their opinion, not as fact, but as opinion. And I would like the people to think a little bit about other people's perspective. Ted Lasso, you guys know Ted Lasso? He said, "We want, he wants people. People should be more curious and less judgmental." I'm going to work on that. So why don't we all work on that? Where we can try to understand people's perspectives instead of being judgmental and accusing our town paid and fallen to representatives of being in the parks, developers, and other accusations. Let's calm down a little bit, and let's all try to work together.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Sue Hamel, Bay Street. I'm going to continue to ask the town council to please post emailed comments they receive in advance of town council meetings, along with the appropriate agenda item. It's transparent. It helps the public understand and engage on issues. I reviewed the, there's a communications presentation we're going to see shortly, and it highlights the fact that human interest stories do best. And when I see emails from residents, it changes the dialogue a bit for me, and it makes the, whatever the issue is, it makes it a little more personal, and I'm just more interested in finding out more. So it brings a human interest side to many issues that the town is dealing with. And it's easy. It doesn't cost anything. It's just posting emails that people write to the council, and it's public information. The other issue I want to just address is when I came in here tonight and I see a sandwich board in the hallway with information on an issue that is, people are already voting, early voting. And I think about the fact that when voting is going on, I remember when we had newspapers. The newspapers had to all be removed because you couldn't have anything with a candidate's name or photo or any, anything that could possibly be construed as related to the election. So for instance, if Karen and Michelle, if they had posters out there with just picture of them, that wouldn't be allowed. And I don't know why this is different, that we have a sandwich board with information about the school issue out there. And so maybe I don't understand that this is different. And it's, I'm assuming that it's been checked out and with the, the, whatever, the clerk of the election or whatever it's called. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else wishing to make general public comment?
Good evening, Allison Bristol, Bayview Avenue. And what I wanted to comment on is sort of on the agenda tonight. It's the vulnerability assessment study that... Well, first, I want to again acknowledge GEI and town staff and the Work Study Group, volunteers for the tremendous time and effort that went into compiling the data and making the recommendations. Given the importance of the study and how it may ultimately impact many residents, it was surprising to me that the final report is being submitted as part of the town manager's report versus, at the very least, an agenda item that welcomes public comment. So I generally don't like to make public comment before I've heard the discussion. This is just based on, off of reading the attachments on the, on tonight's agenda. And here are a few thoughts. And the overarching thought is, this just has to be the beginning, and it is imperative that there is ongoing neighborhood dialogue between the town and the neighborhoods that this is going to affect. We have had two meetings. We had one last summer. We had one this summer at Higgins Beach. The second one might have been at my suggestion with what was being put on the table. And, but these meetings are more presentational style. And, but these meetings are more presentational style. It's not really a dialogue about recommendations and where the town or, you know, GEI thinks we should be moving forward with things. Case in point, the Bayview Avenue project. We're thrilled that there is a pilot project going on. But it has, there has been conversation with the state, I know. You can't find this on the story map. And I will say that residents are continuously directed to the story map for updates, the story map that's on the vulnerability page, for updates and for information. It's there, but it's not on the story map. It's on the vulnerability assessment page, so you have to be a geek like myself who looks at these pages and reads every document to figure out what's going on. It's imperative that the town sit with the neighborhoods and look at a neighborhood holistically and explain it all to people. Very technical, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of technical, scientific data involved. And it's not just about understanding, you know, the January storms were a number four scenario. It's understanding that, you know, currently, the Bayview Pilot Project, they're talking to the state about taking the Silver Sands Hotel revetment and moving it to secure the sewer line along Bayview. Well, by doing that, that could impact other people's properties at the beach. So before it's completed, the neighborhood should be brought into the conversation. Also important, from the meeting we had in the summer, and I also went to the Pine Point meeting to hear what was said at Pine Point, it's very clear that there's the likelihood of federal funding to do some of these major projects in the next four or five years is nil. So if there are some concerns with the sewer lines, what is being done about that? And we certainly can go to the Sanit District and voice that concern. But I think the neighborhoods need to be part of the conversation to say, okay, how are we going to move forward? And the last thing I'll approach is identifying coastal mixed use, not coastal mixed use, coastal risk areas and doing some rezoning. Well, what does that mean? Does that, you know, if that means elevating properties, from the conversation that we had at Higgins Beach, I understood that to mean, depending on where your property is, you may, if you're in the back dune, front dune, FEMA velocity zone, this zone, that zone, it might be different. And you're leaving it up to the residents to figure out how high they have to build. Well, it should be consistent within the neighborhood. And so there needs to be conversation about a lot of things that are in this assessment package with the neighborhoods moving forward. And unfortunately, the beach communities are pretty much all around in the summertime. So that's also something that needs to be taken into consideration. But I would ask that we not get into the normal process of it goes to long-range planning, it goes to planning board, it goes to ordinance, it goes to first read, it goes to second read. And my time is up, but I would just ask, ask that we please, 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 engage the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted by this. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And just as a point of information, order number 25-101 is act on the request of the Sustainability Manager to accept the vulnerability assessment. And so it is a standalone agenda item this evening. According to the clerk, it has always been that way. Is there anyone else wishing to make general public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will close general public comment. Item five on our agenda is the meeting minutes from October 1st, 2025, from the Town Council meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor? Show that it's unanimous. Thank you. Item six is adjustments to the agenda. I have no adjustments this evening. Item seven is items to be signed treasurer's warrants. I took care of those prior to the meeting. Item eight is the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, Scotty Hill Road closure. This is a standing item. I think I've had it on for probably the last two or three months, maybe ever since we became aware of the Culver failure. We continue to pursue grant options. Speaker of the podium inquired about that. We have made application. The one that we're interested in is pending. We'll know more in December. I would remind the public and the council that because of regulatory reasons, we couldn't have done anything in that area until November. So even now, we could not do work. In terms of budget amendment, though, it's possible during my tenure, we've done, we used that sparingly. A working number for kind of conventional replacement is about $2 million. And again, based on my experience in this town, that would be a large ask out of budget cycle. That's certainly within reason. If the council wishes to pursue that, I'm pleased to advance that further. We will be engaging with the immediate property owners, the Flaherty's. Clearly, others are affected, and we intend to engage the public more robustly. Sawyer Street and the Spur and Marsh matter, it's an item on your agenda this evening. Our counterparts in Cape Elizabeth are considering a similar matter at their regular public meeting as well. The town held kind of a reintroduction to this project, which has been around for over three years, at least in the public side, longer than that at the staff level. Received input from our residents and from some non-residents. Cape Elizabeth, for its part, held their own public workshop last week. I'm aware that a number of Scarborough residents went and provided comment to the Cape Council. And so before you this evening will be a discussion, I hope, and a decision on whether you wish to pursue discontinuance of Sawyer Street, in which case that discontinuance would start the process by filing with clerk and scheduling a public hearing on the matter. A couple of points of interest just for the community. We are reinstituting the Fire Prevention Open House. It's something that former Chief Thurlow did consistently and very well. We kind of fell out of practice, and Chief Kinlan is committed to getting back doing that. So October 18th, from 10 to 1, right here at the Oak Hill Station, we'll be doing our open house focused on fire prevention. I want to remind the community that SEDCO will be holding its annual business celebration, or celebration of business on October 28th, the Black Point Inn. In your packet this evening with my report are the quarterly financial reports. Norm is not able to be here this evening. And as I reviewed them myself, I think we're generally tracking in good shape. I would note excise taxes appear to be trending very good this early in the year, just kind of the first quarter. But so far, we're trending very good in that regard, and expenditures are tracking quite nicely. This time of year, we do make our bond payments, so we'll see some expenses rise just as a function of that timing on the calendar. A couple of things that have come, I just want to report on that weren't on my written list here. In terms of voting activity, at the close of business today, we have issued 1,987 absentee ballots, 957 of which have been returned. For comparison purposes, I look back at where we were at this point of early voting back in November '23, when the last time the school bond was before the community. We're, I don't have exactly those stats, but I know we're well ahead. What that means, I don't know. And again, for comparative purposes, as I looked to last year, being presidential, we're trending behind that, not surprisingly. Pleased to mention that as of this morning, Mitchell Hill Road is reopened. That closure and the associated detours were in place for about 45 days. The contractors, to their credit, were able to accomplish the work in the stated timeframe. So that road is back open for public use. At the workshop this evening, and again, from the podium, we heard some comments around the so-called LD 1829. I was able to be part of a direct meeting with Speaker Ryan Facto, who is the lead sponsor of this legislation. So it was informative. It was, I can't say that I came away comforted or satisfied, but it's very clearly, there was a clear policy objective. It was also seemed apparent to me that they didn't appreciate some of the impacts. And there is current rulemaking that will be happening over the course of the fall and early winter. There seems to be some appetite for maybe some fix-up legislation, but I honestly don't expect there would be major change. That was the sense I had. I do intend to follow up with some written comments, so he has a little more detail. Later this evening, I'm going to encourage Council Chair. She'll take some time to recognize the council's efforts and the voters' efforts in land conservation. And so we'll take a brief pause as we get to that point of the agenda. And then just to address a couple of points that were raised at the podium. At the last meeting, there was some inquiry about the hedges at the intersection of Sawyer Road and Route 114. We do have confirmation that our contractor will perform that, they said, early next week. So I'd expect Monday or Tuesday. That's been a longstanding area that needs attention, so I'm pleased to finally get there. With respect to the guardrail at Higgins Parkway, the Thursday morning following the last meeting, I did communicate with the Pollard Works Director. He indicated that DOT has taken over the removal. Unfortunately, as was stated, that has not occurred. So for that, I apologize, but we're trying to work with our partners in that regard. And I guess before I turn this over to Allison Carrier for a little presentation on communications, perhaps I'll stop and pause for questions.
Yeah, Councilfellows, thank you.
Yes, Tom, are you able to speak to the question from the podium from a few minutes ago about the sandwich board sign in the lobby and on the school vote? My understanding, or at least my assumption, is that it's informational. It's not saying which way to vote, but I'll defer to...
Yeah, I'm not an election official, so my opinion, take it for what it's worth. But I can tell you, we did a similar thing back in November of '23. We're very careful to make it educational, not a piece of advocacy. You know, I don't play a role in deciding whether something like that stays up. I don't have an active role in elections. Certainly, the Secretary of State's Office kudos pine in the matter. But again, it's consistent with what's been done in the past.
Other questions for Tom? Yeah, John.
Tom, I'm just curious what the sentiment was for the other communities that were at the GP-COG meeting on LD 1829. Were they also frustrated, disappointed? Or how would you describe what the...
Yeah, that's fair. Frustrated, disappointed. There was a bit of a cynical view that will likely, this could backfire, that municipalities will find creative ways to work around and to so-called neuter the policy objectives. And I think that's a very likely possibility. I think we're all going to be very, we're anxious to understand the final details. And then I suspect we'll all go about figuring ways to work within those new rules.
Questions for Tom? Seeing no other questions, Tom, if you want to...
Yes, with that, I'd love to introduce Allison Carrier, her Communications and Marketing Manager. And Allison was asked to provide a quick little kind of communications overview. At least three members of council serve on the Communications Committee of the council, so I think they'll be fairly aware of this material. But I think it's helpful to educate the full council and the public.
Great, thanks, Tom. Yeah, I'm used to giving this talk about communications to the Communications Committee, so I'm glad I have a captive audience. So I'll just kick it off and give a little bit of a heads up of what I'm going to go through. So I'm going to give you an overview about what we do and why we do it, and then break down the channels that I use when I'm sharing out communications, and then give more specific examples of that as it plays out. So just for some background, that might be hard to read, but just for some background for you all, my role started five years ago this month, October 2020, and it was the first communications position for the town. So the town did have an active role in communicating before that. There was a newsletter, there was Facebook, and it was something, and there was a communications committee. So it was something that has been of importance, and that's why they budgeted to make it a position, too. Since then, with me having a dedicated role for it, I've been able to take what was already happening, and it was upcoming events or deadlines or just updates along the way, and they were coming from different departments. But now I'm able to have it centralized through me and also seeing what some of those themes are and incorporating some of the strategy of what residents want to hear about. Also, in the past five years, we started implementing the community survey that's been happening every two years. So that's a way that we are able to find out what the community wants to hear about. So with those things, the reason we are communicating ultimately is we're supporting the departments and the work that they're doing so that they don't have to be doing the communications on top of their roles, supporting the Town Council and what they're talking about, informing the public, and ultimately building trust in the community. And I've heard that in the comments today. It seems to be a theme that trust is important, and so we're doing our best through at least the communications lens to be able to do that. So as part of the Communications Committee, we went through an interesting exercise where we broke down what our ultimate objectives are. Why are we doing this? And kind of defining it and putting it into practice. So just to name to you the five that we narrowed it down to. First is to be strategic. We want to lead the narrative and not necessarily have news media or others leading the narrative for us. So thinking bigger picture, highlighting the accomplishments that we are doing, so it doesn't get lost. Second is being transparent and being accessible. So a lot of what I'll show you with the channels that we use is just to make the information available to people. It shouldn't be hard for you to find out what's happening in the town. So it's really important that what's happening in council meetings, what's happening on the staff level is communicated out to you or available to you. Third is an engaged Town Council. And that's something that I think is not necessarily unique to Scarborough, but does, I think Scarborough does a good job at, the council wants to have a two-way dialogue with residents, and we create avenues to do that. So we have a Council Corner article in the newsletter and the Council Corner Live that was implemented in the past few years. So an engaged Town Council is an important priority for Scarborough. Fourth is having an engaged community. So to go off of that, too, making these opportunities for you to come up with public comment and participate in public meetings and making that information available so you are all able to attend. And then lastly, just making sure that information that we put out has a consistent message, has a consistent brand. You recognize the town logo and just that everything has a more cohesive look to it. So now I'll dive just into some of the channels that we use, and you'll see that we use a lot of them. So it's just a matter of what type of messaging we put on each and where you can find them. So just for a brief overview, the website is obviously the key source of information. Everything is right there. And I don't know how much this means to people, but we have 700,000 page views in the last 12 months. Basically, that's a lot of page views and a lot of information that people can go look at. It's the placeholder for our town news posts. We have a what's happening page that I'll show you more about, and the newsletters, which I'll share with you. We have them archived on the website if you ever wanted to go back to them. So the newsletter, that's something we send out on the 1st and the 15th of every month. And we have 4,800 subscribers. That was a little over 1,000 five years ago. So it's good to see that it's growing and also that it's a valuable source of information for people. And despite having grown so much in that time, the open rate has stayed the same, and that's 70%, which is higher than average for something like this. So definitely a good place to go if you're looking for consistent communications directly to you. We have social media, Facebook and Instagram, and we'll get into some of the challenges with that. But another place to go, just to have it on your news feed. And the Scarborough Now, it's hard to say Scarborough Now, thinking of it as the Scarborough Leader. But the Scarborough Leader is, was in print for a long time, as you know, and recently switched back in May to being digital only. And that's a challenge that we've experienced, just with that having always been a regular place that we can provide information and they're picking up on town stories, too. But we have a weekly column called In the Know that we've always had in the Leader. And they've switched to online, and it's still available for free online, and it still looks like the paper. So we continue to use that as a place where we submit information every week. So we continue to use that as a place where we submit information every week. I'll share more about that after. A couple more, so with the loss of the print edition of the leader, at the same time, Scarborough Living Magazine recently has become more prevalent in our community, and so we are using that as a way to provide print. It's not on the same cadence, and it's not delivered in mailboxes, but it's still a good way to just pick up and learn about what's happening in the town. So we recently started doing an insert right in the centerfold, four pages, that gives a high-level overview of what the town's working on. And also with the loss of the leader, we have started utilizing tax bills and knowing that's already getting mailed to homes, including an update, front and back piece of paper with town communications. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention too that councillors are doing their own outreach. Anytime there's a town event, we make sure that there's marketing materials or letting people know about our newsletter and getting people to subscribe to that, and that it's another engagement opportunity. So punchline is taken already, but the human interest stories have been performing the performing the best on our social media pages, and it's no surprise. I mean, anytime you are able to personalize what's happening on the town level, it just makes it more interesting for people. That's generally the stories that people want to hear. So in this example, John Murray, he just started in IT a couple of months ago. The assessing team, they recently won an international award, so that performed well. And then Officer Andrew Shoal, we just profiled him for a day in the life in the Scarborough Living Magazine. And those are all just fun opportunities for me to get to know what people are working on and being able to get some of that positive feedback out to the community. Another example, just showing a cross-section of the type of communications we put out. The past three summers, we've done a photo contest, and it's a really good mood-boosting way to just see what people, how other people see Scarborough, and they share their photos. And I post them on our Facebook page, and it gets a lot of good engagement and people like positive kudos and just nice to capture some of what we all love about Scarborough. The what's happening page is a page on our website that is has started a few years ago, and it is the centralized place. I was finding it, this was kind of my own selfish reason for making it, but when I first started, I was finding it hard to find information on certain big projects that I was having to go dig into meeting minutes and different places on the website to see what was put it all together. So this is a way to take a project that's happening and put it all on one page so that the information is available to you there, and then each of those project pages we have pulled onto one central page that we call What's Happening. So that's available on the website, and those project pages are getting updated. A really good example of one that has been that we've been looking at a lot recently is the Squarelink Marsh Restoration that you'll talk about tonight. But that's a really good example of showing the backgrounds, giving some context, showing some engagement opportunities. And there are several other pages that follow a similar style. The Budget in Brief was something that we started for the first time this past spring in budget season, and that was a way, thinking of accessibility. The budget document is over 400 pages, and if we're trying to get residents engaged in the budget process, just making sure, making it more accessible and user-friendly, so we simplified it into a seven-page document that gives very high-level summary overview of what's in the budget document and where the tax dollars go, what the services are. So that was a cool project that spring that we'll keep doing. Um, looking ahead, I just took this as a place to think about what some of the challenges are that I face and also to the opportunities, but some of the challenges, you can probably all relate to this, but there is so much information on the internet and on social media. So it can be hard to stay fresh and relevant and making sure, if I'm trying to make sure that everyone sees the information that we're putting out, it's hard to do that when you're competing against all the other posts that are on Facebook. Misinformation has also been a big topic, mostly on social media, but just trying to stay communicating with the information that we have available. I talked about this with the loss of the leader, but making sure that information is available to people, not only online but offline. What are the print avenues that we have, and how is it regularly getting to people has been a challenge that tested us this year, and we found a few workarounds, but still, there's opportunity there. Limited staff capacity, there's so much that I want to do, so many ideas that I see that other towns are doing, and so there's just limitations on how much we're able to do. And explaining complex issues simply, that's something that's come up a few times this year where something is so complex, even with the workshop you listened to earlier, it's so, can be hard to drill that down and into just a social media post that you see one-off, so trying to combat that. And some opportunities, like I said, with the human interest stories being really popular, there's opportunities to do more storytelling. There's opportunities to expand into more print avenues, simplifying those complex topics that I mentioned, and continuing with engagement opportunities with the council and residents. And some takeaways that you might have heard throughout what I was saying is that we have a lot of channels for information, so at times it can feel like you might not know what's happening in the town, but just a few clicks away, there's a lot of ways to get that information, whether it be the website, social media, things like that. And we also offer varying areas of, if you just want to get a high-level, quick what's happening in the town snapshot, can see it in the newsletter or just a quick front page of the home homepage of the website. But if you wanted to dive deeper into more, drill down into more specifics and agenda materials, that information is also available to you and on the website. Human interest stories perform best, and continuing to find ways to stay current and making improvements is something that we're always working towards and listening to resident feedback, hearing what's happening on the council level, seeing what other communities are doing with their communications and facing challenges like with the loss of the leader. Those are all ways that we continually try to improve. And with that, we will just give a last plug to sign up for the newsletter if you haven't already, but I'm sure if you are in this room, you are. And thank you, everyone, for being engaged in the town and hearing about my overview of what I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. So selfishly, I also have a council bucket list of things that I'm trying to check off before I leave my term, and I have had on my list, on my shortlist, to have Alison come and present, because I think it's so important that residents understand just how much goes into our communication and just how invaluable adding this position has been to the town and to our residents, and how much she does to serve the council. And so I just wanted to highlight you, Alison, and make sure that everyone knows what you do and can appreciate what you do, because I certainly do and have for the last four years, and so thank you for coming and presenting. I know that it's, you know, really tough. It's a tough, tough gig sometimes. And so I just wanted to make sure that we turned the camera around and that you weren't always behind the scenes.
Thank you.
With that, I will move on to item nine in our agenda, standing and special committee reports and liaison reports. I usually start down there. I will start down here this tonight.
Yeah, we had to have a meeting last night. They talked about the floats and stuff, what's going to happen, the same old stuff that was at the council meeting last week. So not too much going on, pretty, pretty quiet, really. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
I can't thank Alison enough either, because as the newly inserted Chair of the Council Communications Committee, she has really been invaluable and has, although she hasn't been here forever, she's got a great history on it. But I really encourage you, if you don't get that newsletter, you sign up once and it comes to you automatically twice a month. And Alison is just constantly collecting that information. And the job she does with the kind of behind-the-scenes with the graphic design and making it interesting and informative is is just fabulous. And so, thank you, Alison, and we'll keep moving forward to one of the points from public comment earlier. We are working in communications, we are working on organizing a more of more of a defined program of having community meetings out in the community rather than in this format that where they would be a little more casual and and some back-and-forth dialogue rather than kind of controlled public comment. And so we should by next meeting, we should have a plan for that with dates and the areas, we intend to go to kind of the different geographic areas of town and have those. We hope to go through a cycle of that. Hopefully, it'll prove productive for everyone, and we'll be able to continue that moving forward. Other than that, on the school communications, which Alison is also helpful with, that project is moving forward for informing and getting out the information needed to have everybody understand exactly what's involved in the referendum proposals from an informational basis. And that's moving forward, and voting's already started, so that will begin to wind down within a couple, the committee part will wind down within a couple of weeks. And other than that, I think that's about it for tonight.
Great, thank you. Karen.
Sure, thank you. The ordinance committee met last week, and I think our agenda this evening reflects some of the work that came out of the ordinance committee, so I'm excited to go over that. The Parks and Conservation Land Board is actually meeting tomorrow, and they are working on integrating our open space plan into that, the evaluation tool. And so that was part of what we came out of the open space plan was we can update the evaluation tool on how we evaluate the properties that apply for the $6 million land bond, so that'll be a good conversation. The the Conservation Commission meets next week to discuss their 2026 goals. They're always bright with ideas. I'm looking forward to that conversation and to seeing what comes out of that group. And I also just wanted to mention, I'm not the liaison to the Shellfish Commission, but I was invited to their meeting this week because they were discussing an ordinance, and I think they just wanted a little guidance on how the ordinance process was. Unfortunately, they only had six people there, and it actually failed 3-3, which was disappointing, I think, for the the members. But what was interesting that came out of the conversation was it looks like their license fees have not been updated in a very long time, and so I said maybe that was something they could revisit, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Karen. Council fellows.
Thank you. The Long Range Planning Committee met last week, kind of continuing its big-picture planning exercise of just kind of taking a step back and thinking, thinking with open minds about uses and scale and different parts of different parts of the community, and they'll be continuing to move that forward. And as I think I alluded to last time, last time I gave an update that that as that crystallizes more, I think that may help inform some of our discussions as we move forward around growth management and planning. Excuse me, the Planning Board meets next week on Monday evening. Got a very full agenda, which includes, among other things, a couple, at least a couple of different single-family developments at various stages. And then I believe the very last item on the agenda is sketch plan review for the proposed main mariner's practice facility, which would go in the Downs over on the Innovation District side of that complex. So some of you may have seen that release when it went out last week. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Donovan.
Nothing to report. I have two committee meetings coming right up.
Thank you, Council Anderson.
Yep, Finance met last week. We talked about impact fees, and we actually moved the recommendation that that the committee has gotten to to counsel for a future workshop that the next round of leadership will discuss. I wouldn't say it's a complete package. There were a couple of things that we just elected to move forward for broader council conversation as it relates to the school impact fees. The the bottom line is, you know, 20% of the project will be paid for by new development as part of these impact fees, so there's still a little, some loose ends that I think the council will want to work through before it comes to council for first reading, assuming the school passes. If the school doesn't pass, then it won't come forward because we need the project in order to put the impact fees in place. And we also looked at the beach revenues based on the changes that we made. So this year, the town made essentially $100,000 more in revenue. We also saw more purchases of resident passes and second passes and also saw a drop in daily passes. You know, again, a lot of, I think the policy we we had was to try and balance that a little bit to make sure that we don't have overcrowding and are competitive with other other beaches, so I think we accomplished that. A lot of interesting conversation about what's next, because I know staff is exploring an automated system. And so we still may need to dig into these details to say, how do we balance overcrowding with access, which I think has been a big topic of conversation when we were talking about beach fees. The school came forward requesting that we use the turf reserve fund to apply to the bond for the turf project that was just completed or is in process of being completed. So this reserve fund started when the town initially was the first to have turf where a lot of other communities were interested in using it, so we collect fees for usage. And so those fees have been collected over the years. There was about 140,000 in there. We essentially elected to use all of that to put towards the bond so that we pay that down before we go to bond, so that way we have less interest to pay over time, and given where the current interest rates are, it seemed like that was the best course of action. So that will be something that the future council may act on to accept the committee's recommendation to use those funds that way. We did also finish our discussion on stormwater fees. It wasn't unanimous, but essentially the recommendation from the committee was to stop exploring the fees right now and to encourage the council when we have a conversation about goals that we consider, whether we want to invest more rapidly or differently in stormwater management. So that's something that the next council can can look into. So that that's it for finance.
Great, thank you, John. Can I ask you to expand on something? And I'm I'm teeing you up because I know that you can answer this very well, but can you elaborate on what you mean by you won't be bringing forward the school impact fees if the project doesn't pass? Just because I think just hearing that on its face makes it sound perhaps like we're we're not going to address the impact fees for the school if we don't get what we want.
Yeah.
And and that's really not the message.
So again, it's really about state legislation, so the state requires us to have qualified projects in order to impose an impact fee. And so it really, you really have to have something, and so if voters don't pass the school bond, then we don't have anything to apply an impact fee to. So at some point, if the school doesn't pass this time, I would assume if you were at our last workshop, we like to use impact fees to try and minimize the impact to taxpayers. So I would assume future councils for future projects, if and when this one doesn't pass, would elect to still put an impact fee. It just has to be based on the qualified project that's approved by voters.
Just just a finer point in that, we've had a school impact fee for over 20 years and will continue to. This is about an update to it. So just to be clear, if council chooses to do nothing based on the voter result, that doesn't mean we will not have a fee. We'll continue to keep the fee that we have in place.
Thank you very much. All set with updates? The only thing from me this week is the Boston Post Kane Celebration, which is then an award that we give to Scarborough's oldest resident. That committee met, and we have selected a recipient, and the celebration for this resident will be on October 27th here at Town Hall at 2:00. And I will make sure that the council has those details if anyone would like to come and celebrate with me as we present the Boston Post Kane. Moving on through our agenda, we are now on to order number 25-095, which is a 7:00 PM public hearing and action on the new request for a mobile food vendor license from Dave Gialargo, I'm sorry if I butchered that, doing business as Terra Firma, Terra Firma Food Truck. Thank you.
Request for a mobile food vendor license, and per the ordinance, it does require initial action by the council. By approving this license, it will authorize the vendor to serve the county Scarborough. And the Council Parks Office recommends the book.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Any council discussion? Yes, Larry.
Lee Terra Firma. Was at the Sustainability Day, and the food was fantastic.
It was delicious. I also, my kids also ate from the. I also, my kids also ate from the food truck. It was delicious. Other council discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor? Show that as unanimous, thank you. Order number 25-096 is a 7:00 PM public hearing in action on the new request from SCA LLC for a medical cultivation facility cannabis license located at 20 Snowcanning Road.
Thank you. So this is a license. The one footnote we have regarding this license is actually seeking to occupy two thirds of the 20 Snowcanning Road facility. The original application came forward seeking to occupy all three of the suites. But through a review with the zoning administrator and town staff, it was determined that due to the thousand foot buffer that was adopted by the council last year, the nonconforming use in one third of the building was not in practice for more than 12 months. And so therefore it was not eligible for licensure. So it is a bit of a modification to the original application.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Council discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Show that as unanimous, thank you. Order number 25-097 is a 7:00 PM public hearing in action on the new request for a new massage therapist license from Brianna Bragdon, located at Family Chiropractic Associates, located at 20 Black Point Road.
Thank you. This is a new application, this note on the order. As required by the ordinance, it does have to have initial approval by the town council. The application is embedded, everything is okay, and the clerk's office is looking for the council.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Show that as unanimous, thank you. Old business this evening. Order number 25-089 is second reading to approve the expenditure in an amount not to exceed $192,500 from the Land Acquisition Reserve Fund to assist Maine Farmland Trust in purchasing an agricultural easement on 39 acres located at 3 Fenderson Place, identified by the Scarborough Tax Assessors Map as R003 Lot 021A O'Donnell Deering Farm, as recommended by the Parks and Conservation Land Board, and authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents as are necessary to protect the town's interest. Welcome.
Hello, Jessica Sargent, Chair of Parks and Conservation Land Board, Beach Ridge, RIB. Didn't make it for this one last time, so I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. The applicant, which is Maine Farmland Trust, is here in the audience if you have detailed questions. We also have the future landowner. It'll be the Deering family farm, if you have specific questions regarding the history or future use of the farm. So also, really quickly, just wanted to highlight that, yes, I believe concerned farmland should count towards our 30 by 30 goal. It's very important to preserving the quality and history of the town. You have a long agenda tonight. If you have any questions, myself, the applicant, or the future landowner are happy to answer them. But I will not belabor this wonderful project.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Council discussion? Yes, Counsel Anderson.
Yeah, I'm just going to speak to this and the other items.
Certainly.
They're all kind of related in my mind. But first, I just want to thank the public and the residents for voting in favor of the land bond passing that makes these types of projects possible. This wouldn't be possible without out your support. So this is really, you know, I just wanted to thank everybody, since we have a very big audience today for supporting that. This is the first one, I feel like, that we've had Maine Farmland Trust, which is great to see other applicants and protecting farm farmland in town. And I just think, given our workshop around growth and the conversation that we had about how this is a lever that we use in terms of our growth management, I think is great to see that we have three really great projects tonight that really help preserve and protect farmland, open space, and things like that. So again, I just want to thank the taxpayers for supporting the land bond.
Thank you. Other council comment?
Yeah, I'll echo a lot of what John said, all of which John said. And also, for the record, I agree that farmland should count toward 30 for 30. And I also think it's great that to one of John's other comments that we have a full house here for these, for this and the next two items. I think just the way the agendas have laid out for the, at least my recollection is the previous two or three that we've had, it's been maybe toward the end of the night and there aren't many people in the audience. And so I think, again, within the broad context of everything that we're grappling with around growth management and quality of life in Scarborough, it's good for everyone to see this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council comment? Counsel Kane?
I said this on the first reading on this, and this is like the easiest vote, I think, I ever have in that it's really a truly win-win to John and Cory's point of preserving the land, preserving the use for farmland, but also taking this land out of circulation for other development. It's just very simple to move forward.
Anyone else? Counsel Doherty?
You know, I hate to be negative, but it just, one point of it, it probably is a negative. The more land that we put into the land trust, it makes less available to developers. And then it makes Scarborough, you know, people wanting to come even more intense. You know what I mean? But it's a great thing, and I think we should definitely do it. But there's always a negative side to everything. But I think this is a great thing.
Thank you. Other council comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor? Show that as unanimous, thank you. Order number 25-090 is second reading to approve the expenditure in an amount not to exceed $250,000 from the Land Acquisition Reserve Fund to assist the Scarborough Land Trust in purchasing 30 acres located at 91 Muzzy Road, identified by the Scarborough Tax Assessors Map, R055 Lot 014, None Such River Preserve, as recommended by the Parks and Conservation Land Board, and authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents as are necessary to protect the town's interest. Next.
So the applicant, Scarborough Land Trust, is here to answer any detailed questions you have. This one's a little interesting in that the Scarborough Land Trust was awarded a National North American Wetland Conservation Act grant, NACA. It was granted, the check was supposed to arrive in June. It has not. When it may arrive from the federal government is unclear. However, there's a purchase and sale agreement by the end of the year. So what is being asked is that the town use land bond funds in the absence of that check arriving. In the instance where the check does arrive, which it should, it has been awarded, it's just waiting the federal government signing the check. The town would be reimbursed the amount from the land bond. If you want my opinion on when the federal government may be issuing checks on conservation grants, I do not know. But that is the sequence of events that has led to this request. But I also want to acknowledge a landowner donation. I think it's always important to highlight when landowners have made a donation in the form of a bargain sale, because that's our fellow community members making investment in the community, and it's important to acknowledge those donations.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Council discussion? Yes, Karen?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank the Parks and Conservation Land Board, because since we have approved the $6 million land bond, you guys have been exceptionally busy. Just want to thank Jessica Sargent, because you've done a great job as chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Counsel Kane?
Can I just ask, in the event that the check does not arrive, what is the structure of this where is there any written agreement for whether then that becomes a permanent payment? Or does it?
No reimbursement. So at the moment, the request is for 48% of the purchase price from the town. So less than half, with the potential for full reimbursement, which would be zero town investment. However, if the check does not come, then there would be no reimbursement, and the town would fund 48% of the purchase.
Thank you.
I'm expecting to be flagged down if I answer that incorrectly, is what I'm looking to the applicant.
We discussed this at first read, and I will reshare my sentiment, which was, I think that given the way that this is being asked of the town council for approval, I am enthusiastically in support of this request, regardless of whether that check comes. And so obviously, we are very much hoping that we get a reimbursement check. It's been awarded, but the federal government is strained right now in terms of whether or not we can expect that and when. And so what I would hate is for this deal to not be completed on what is essentially a technicality. And so while I hope that that check comes, I just want to express my support for this project, regardless of whether or not we receive reimbursement.
I just want to be clear, I also support that. I think it was kind of more transparency that people listening to that may wonder kind of what happens if this doesn't come through, given the current arrangements in DC.
I think that's very important. Thank you, Counsel Kane. Other comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor? Show that as unanimous, thank you. Order number 25-091 is second reading to approve the expenditure in an amount not to exceed $300,000 from the Land Acquisition Reserve Fund to assist the Scarborough Land Trust in purchasing 25 acres located at 166 Burrwink Road, identified by the Scarborough Tax Assessors Map as R098 Lot 020, as recommended by the Parks and Conservation Land Board, and authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents as are necessary to protect the town's interest.
As we discussed in the last meeting, I don't think you need to go through the details as much as the others, but I did want to, again, recognize a landowner donation, because it's just so important to recognize that effort.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item?
Sue Hamel, Bay Street in High Point. And I first, I want to say that I support the land trust. I think what we're doing is very, very important. But I did, I looked at this particular transaction pretty closely, and it's proposed purchase of 25 acres at 166 Burrwink Road. It's part of a larger 43 acre parcel that includes a house. And it's assessed by the town at 549,000, or about $12,800 per acre. The land trust is proposing to buy 25 acres of that property at roughly 18,000 per acre, which is a notable premium over the assessed value. And based on the information that's available, it appears that the 25 acre parcel is unbuildable with significant wetlands and no road access once it's been divided off. If anything, its per acre price should be below, not above, the assessed value. I request, we requested a copy of the appraisal used to justify the purchase price, but we were told that it is not public information. The lack of transparency is concerning. Taxpayers deserve to know whether the town and the land trust are paying fair market value. And I realize this sale will be approved tonight. And but going forward, especially now that the land trust has access to the recently approved $6 million land bond, and after tonight, we'll have spent 1.5 million of that already. I strongly urge that all future acquisitions require the appraisal to be made public. The town council has a duty to ensure careful stewardship of taxpayer funds, and making appraisals part of the public record would be a simple and very effective way to support that goal. With three land purchases on tonight's agenda in quick succession, I hope the land trust does not feel that the new bond funds are burning a hole in their pocket. And let's be sure we are purchasing properties at fair prices and spending these funds wisely. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Council discussion? Yeah, Counsel Doherty?
Yeah, that's, that's a very interesting point. I didn't, I hadn't realized that. So it's the land trust, it makes it access to the public. This land, when it's sold to the land trust, it makes all that land is public land. But with this piece of property, can the public enter it?
I would be speaking above my pay grade if I answered your question directly on this parcel. So Jessica, can you?
Public access and trails will be provided for recreational access, including hiking, snowshoeing, and wildlife observation. It was in the cover letter. For this, there's a lot of details with three, three at once, but yes.
To that point, oh, just one second, Scott. To that point, though, Jessica, like, I think what Counsel Doherty is asking is kind of just in general. If it's a property that goes to the land trust, does it guarantee public access? And I think that the short answer to that question is not always.
Correct.
Right.
Not always. And I was remiss in not highlighting that we are, we PCLB are always clear when and when when public access is allowed, what types? Will there be trails? Is it hunting, that sort of thing? And when public access is not allowed? So this one will be public access and trails. And it is an expansion of existing preserve. So parking's already there. This one, meaning there's likely to be public access immediately, because a lot of the infrastructure, like parking, is already there.
Thank you.
166, is that near the Burrwink River? Is there other public parking, the pier? What is that conservation area there?
Pleasant Hill Preserve.
Yeah, right, okay. So it's attached to that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott Liam was able to pull the map up super quick, too. If you can, I can try and orient us. Oh.
So the highlighted parcel is the one of light green?
No. I'll line in red.
Oh, the red, okay.
The property connects to approximately 500 acres of continuous conserve lands, including 300 acres of the Rachel Carson National Wildlife Refuge and the 186 acre Pleasant Hill Preserve. It would expand the existing Pleasant Hill Preserve to 211 acres. So that's why you're seeing multiple colors.
So the access to that property would be from Pleasant Hill Road?
Yes, the parking lot, it's the Pleasant Hill Preserve parking.
Right up Pleasant Hill Road here.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or council discussion on this one?
Well, one more thing.
Certainly.
Just to say about, we should be informed of how much we are paying for it. I think that is a good idea. We should spend the money wisely, and I think we should know, you know, what the market value of it is. And like we said, a lot of times this land, when it gets donated, whatever, it's wetlands anyway, and it's not of much value. It's not buildable, it's not anything. And somebody could be, you know, cashing in on some unbuildable land, and they get this, worthless, you know? So I think we should somehow do some checks and balances on that in the future. Thank you.
Other council comment on this? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor? Show that as unanimous, thank you. In the spirit of checking boxes and getting to do my council bucket list, we're going to take a little sidestep from our agenda so that I can proudly add some sand to our art installation. Before I do that, I was provided, thankfully, from Jamie Fitch, some numbers here. So since the last addition of sand in April, the Scarborough Land Trust has conserved 192 acres on three parcels. The additional 192 acres brings the total to 7,301.5 acres, or 24% of Scarborough. 1,871.5 additional acres are needed to achieve our 30 by 30 goal. But this is certainly exciting and a step in the right direction. And this does not include the three that we just approved tonight. So these are previous acquisitions that I will be adding the sand for this evening. So I'm going to get to go do this. So I'm gonna get to go do this.
I'm not sure how we decided. There's two. We get to do two.
Faster, faster.
How's it look? It's supposed to look uneven. I make this artistic, artisanal. When it's your turn, you wait for it however you want it to go.
Seems like time was passing by.
And, and thank you again. I just think that that's such a beautiful representation, and, and I'm really honored to have gotten to contribute by pouring sand in. Moving on in our agenda this evening to new business, we are on to order number 25-098, which is first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 302A, Town of Scarborough Committee's Boards Manual Regarding Appointments and Reappointments. And this is being brought to us by Councilor Anderson.
Yep, so I can, I can tee it up. So last year, the council elected to put term limits in on our volunteers. So it's essentially after they served for nine years, they have to be off the council for at least a year and then can reapply. I did vote to support this when we originally had it, and I regretted it the moment I supported it. But I was willing to give it a shot. And then this year, after getting feedback from staff and our, our volunteers, the feedback generally was, you know, this is, is really preventing some really great people from continuing to serve who want to serve. And we don't necessarily have, unfortunately, the biggest influx of new applicants willing to serve and, and come forward. So for me, it was really about the fact that I think volunteerism is really hard to get in town. If people want to spend their free time doing things with the town, I felt like creating barriers for that at a time when volunteerism is pretty low was really a negative thing. I, I fully support that we want to bring in new faces to our committees, and this doesn't prevent that because it's ultimately up to the Appointments and Negotiations Committee to recommend people to our committees, and then it's ultimately up to the council. So if the council feels like we need to bring in new, new blood, new faces, we have that ability to do that. We don't need to impose term limits in order to, to prevent that from happening. So I just feel like this is just me feeling like, you know, if, if somebody wants to spend their free time dedicated to supporting this town, I don't want to turn them away. I want to give them that option to continue to, to be a part of, of our conversations. Again, these are volunteer positions. There's no authority that they have. Authority ultimately lies with the council so they can give recommendations, but it doesn't mean we have to go with those recommendations. There's been multiple things on this council where I feel like committees had voted strongly for us to support something that we did not always go necessarily hand in hand with. And so again, I view them as very important people who bring a lot of value. And I, I value both new faces, but also knowledge and history, and think trying to find that balance on our committees is ultimately the best thing we can do. So I'm putting it forward for the council for consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item?
Yes, Don Hamel, Bay Street in Pine Point. Yeah, I, this is an issue that's near and dear to my heart. I spent a career in human resources, may have been in the, you know, ancient times. But there's, there are very few things that are more important than selecting people to serve on committees like this. I served as chair of the Appointments Committee. It's one of the best things that I did when I was on the council. I really enjoyed it. So the idea of having somebody just stay on, you know, because we can't find any other members, I think misses the point completely. There's, we don't have emeritus roles. In some cases, I think some of the folks that are in these positions have been there a long time, and maybe the views that they have, you know, have, have not really reflected those of, of the community and are, are keeping pace with the, the changing times. So I'd suggest that another solution would be, instead of just letting them stay on the committees, that may sound a little harsh, reduce the number of people on the committee. You know, you've got seven people on the committee, reduce it to five. And I know that it's hard to get people to make a commitment, but you want to have your best people on those as possible. And I think in some cases, it's good to have some new blood and some turnover. And particularly in certain areas where we've had people just have stayed on for a long time, overhauled multiple roles, you know, it's not necessarily a good thing. I think a smaller group of, of people that change over a period of time. I'm also surprised that we didn't have time limits before. I thought we did. I seem to recall that, that there were time limits, but anyway, that's just another view. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Denise Hamilton, Two Rod Road. I'm very concerned about how this item is being handled. If the intent is to modify the term limits that just went into effect on January 1st, then it should be done through the same transparent process used to adopt them in the first place. That process included the Rules and Policy Committee, full council review with public input before any readings, a public hearing and two readings before adoption. Instead, this proposal has been placed directly on the agenda for a first reading, bypassing the committee review and public discussion. While a charter technically allows a counselor to introduce an ordinance amendment at any time, it's not the standard or the transparent way Scarborough has handled structural policy changes like this. The Rules and Policy Committee exists for a reason, to carefully review proposals, ensure consistency with other parts of the code, and most importantly, give the public a chance to understand and weigh in before the full council even considers it. Skipping that step makes it look like we're fast-tracking an issue that deserves thoughtful review. And we have to ask, what's the rush? These term limits haven't even had time to work. They went into effect less than a year ago, and there's been no evidence they've caused any problems. In fact, under the current ordinance, from what I've read, if a position isn't filled, the person already serving simply continues until a replacement is appointed. So this amendment feels unnecessary at best and reactionary at worst. It's also worth remembering that when these term limits were adopted in September 24, the discussion was lengthy and deliberate. And although one counselor at that time, including a Counselor Anderson, voted in favor, whether you, there was only one, you, did not vote. Oh, right, she's not on anymore. So it's fair for residents to wonder what changed so suddenly that this now needs to be reversed or weakened. At its core, this isn't just about term limits. It's about trust, consistency, and transparency. Residents expect counselors to follow the same process for ordinance changes that everyone else has to follow. Bypassing that process undermines public confidence and makes it appear as though decisions are being made behind closed doors. For these reasons, I urge the council not to continue this past first reading. Refer it back to Rules and Policy if the majority of counselors agree that's where it belongs. My opinion is that it does not, and we need to give the current ordinance time. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise, and I apologize for interrupting. I was involuntary and I, and not appropriate, so I apologize. Anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Richard Hayes, Martin Avenue. Short and sweet, I, I agree with the previous two speakers that this hasn't had a chance to, to even work. I didn't know it, but Denise said it went into effect in January, and here we are in October, looking to change it. And as Denise pointed out, if, if in fact there aren't sufficient volunteers, the current members can stay, so I agree. What's the rush? Give it a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Council discussion? Yes, Councilor Anderson.
Yeah, so just to clarify, I originally, when I wanted to do this, did reach out to Counselor Fellows, who is the Chair of Rules and Policy. And unfortunately, I don't think they could get a meeting in place in order to, to review this. And the reason why I wanted to do it sooner rather than later was because we are approaching that time of year where we are asking for applicants and having to make decisions to, to put people on the boards and committees. So there is a little bit of urgency from a timing perspective because we do have really good people who would love to continue to serve. And again, I, I stand behind the fact that they're volunteers, it's their free time. If they wanted to choose to spend time on these committees, then I don't want to create a barrier for that. And there's been many people on my tenure as council where I've tried to recruit people, even some of the speakers who spoke, I've asked multiple times to apply for a committee, and I constantly get the, the response that they can't commit to it. It is a big commitment. These are three-year commitments that people are willingly signing up for to sacrifice time from family, friends, and others. And I think it's really important that if people want to volunteer, we, we give them the opportunity to volunteer. But again, we can also, as counselors, this isn't saying that any individual who has volunteered will automatically get reappointed. It's ultimately up to the Appointments Committee to decide if they want to put them forward to the council, and then it's ultimately up to the council to vote. So it's not a free pass for anybody to just get, you know, willy-nilly appointed. There's process and structure to do that. So I think we have the mechanisms in place that if counselors really want to bring in different people, we can do that. I just don't want to turn anybody away because of, of a rule that we, we applied. That again, to me, in retrospect, just doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Councilor Shoup?
Thank you. So I've served on the Appointments and Negotiation Committees the last three years. As a counselor, I was the chair. And I will say, the frustration that I was seeing was residents showing up to committees that they wanted to serve on, that they could not get on because people were being renewed and renewed and renewed again. I think, you know, we have people who have served on committees for over 20 years, and our population has expanded, and we have applicants right now. Right now, for example, I have 50 applications currently pending for the few spots that are going to be opening up. So each committee, we have 13 active committees. I went and counted, and yes, there's more listed on the website, but there's actually only 13 that are currently very active. And so typically, it's two spots that are coming open. And without those two spots, not everyone is timing out after their nine-year time. So we're talking maybe one spot per committee. So we currently have 50 applications. Within the current applications that we have, we have UNE professors, attorneys, law students, engineers, renewable energy consultants, aquaculture business owners, environmental scientists, who is also a veteran, an economist, and architect. So I think one of the emails, we said we, we don't have qualified people. I think we have qualified people sitting in the queue, and we currently have full committees. And so what's concerning to me is people reaching out to me, saying, I want to apply. I want to be on this committee. I've been waiting to get onto this committee for a long time, and not having that opportunity. I am, I, and I think one of the things that I liked appreciating was taking someone off of one committee and sort of saying, why don't you bring your expertise to a different committee? And we've watched that happen. So there is great opportunity for people to maybe provide their expertise on a different committee. And I just will say anecdotally, it's very difficult as a counselor to sit on the Appointments Committee and not renew someone who has given their time and effort. But when you have someone who's given their time and effort, but then you have an expert, it is a very difficult thing. And so I think a natural process is to have someone time out, evaluate what the applications we have there, and see what it is. I, I, I just, I struggle with the fact that we have residents who are very qualified. They've been waiting to be on these committees. They're all full. And I can say that I have seen the benefit of someone being timed out and having a new member come. And so, you know, I think also the process, there was a lot of time and effort behind, behind the process that we did when we decided to implement these changes. I, I actively recruit. I, I was looking at one of the applications that came in last week, and it's kind of almost embarrassing when I'm recruiting people, but then there's no place to put them, and there's really no control. And so I would say the feedback I've gotten, I, I was unaware of the negative feedback. Like I think, I think some of the committees are like, oh, they've been on here forever. But a conversation I had with the Parks and Conservation Land Board, who was losing someone is, but we've, we've educated that committee so well, they're in a good position. And just because someone doesn't serve on a committee doesn't mean they can't continue to show up, give their opinion, and have that opinion. So I think, you know, it's, for me, it's very concerning that we haven't given this the time to kind of play out. I understand that we wanted to get this done because maybe someone's timing out that we don't want to lose, but that, I mean, they can always reapply, they can stay on if there isn't. But I, I think considering our town and the, without even realizing that we had 50 applications, that we have qualified people that are looking, that have been talking to us. And last time, you know, it was a conversation that went through the Appointments and Negotiations Committee. And I think we are the ones looking at the applications, evaluating them. And so I think for me, I do feel like we're kind of jumping the gun a little bit, and I would like to have more of a conversation because I have not received the same feedback about how difficult it's been to get quality people.
Counselor Fellows, thank you.
Thank you. First, just on a, at the procedural level, as Counselor Anderson said, there was some communication with me as Chair of Rules and Policy about when and how to potentially move this forward. And we had scout, a scheduling challenge there. In my mind, in my understanding, it'd been that this was, the intent was never to bypass that step or to bypass public process. But that given, given the desire to generally advance this and start this conversation as soon as possible, that we start with the full council, actually saw potential opportunities there to sort of get this type of, you know, sort of take the preliminary, the initial temperature of the full council, and then determine as a council how we wanted to proceed, potentially referring it to rules and policies, which, which I personally feel would be appropriate. I was not on the council when this was enacted. I think it was just not too long before I joined the council. Having served on the boards and committees prior to this, I could definitely understand, I can sort of see both sides of it. And I, I will say, I haven't really taken a position on this yet. I have heard from a couple of people who serve on committees who are a little concerned about not having the opportunity to continue to serve, and there's a lot of institutional knowledge there. There's a lot to be said for that, for, for continuing to tap into that and, and have continuity at the same time. Counselor Shoup has made good points about, and I sit on Appointments and Negotiations as well, and I've gotten a little bit of a taste of that over the, over the past few months. It is, it is, I do have mixed feelings when I see some of the applicants that are there kind of in the queue. I also personally have some mixed feelings and reservations about the notion of just kind of selectively not renewing people because I just, I worry about the perception of, of the council overly politicizing things and, or maybe the perception that people are trying to pack committees one way or another. I'm not saying that would ever be the intent, certainly behind what Counselor Anderson is proposing, but I, I do think those are the types of things that we need to really think through, again, going back to this theme of, of, of public trust. So I guess I'll leave it at that, and maybe we can circle back and discuss where we might want to go from there.
Sure. Counselor Kane?
Yeah, mixed feelings on this, John. I actually appreciate you bringing it forward and with the opportunity that it, it may go back to rules. I wonder if it's a deterrent to people sometimes if there's not kind of a shown opening on a committee to say, well, there's no seats there, so I won't apply. And so I think with the kind of fail-safe where if a committee is going, a position's not going to be filled, and the current person wants to stay, that they can, I think that's a, a great backup, you know, that, that the committee itself, the service to the community would be lessened by having an opening, that that's a good way to ensure that somebody would stay if nobody else was applying. So my inclination would, would be not to move this forward. And if it, if the discussion is to put this rules and policy, then I'd be in favor of that.
Counsel Donovan.
Yeah, I mean, so everyone understands. We are talking about nine years, three, three-year terms. And then you take a year off and then you can apply again and go nine more years. And those people who have institutional knowledge are often invaluable. But it also gives an opportunity to take a break, see what, whether this is the, you want to go for another nine years? I, I'm kind of thinking this thing, I like the old rule. I thought it was a, I thought it was an appropriate control on getting people who are new an opportunity to get in. But still, nine years is a long time to serve. So you've got the institutional knowledge for a long time. You're only off for a year and then you're back on. If you're, if you bring that kind of value, we all know it of the people who are on the list and who's not appear. That's just common knowledge for us. So I like the old rule.
Yeah, Counsel Anderson.
So I'm, I am getting the sense generally that I think maybe the will of the council is aligned with you, Bill. So I can live with the current rule if that's what the council ultimately wants to do. I just, I, I really want to give people the opportunity to serve if they want to volunteer and serve. And I, I hate the idea of, of creating any barriers there. But I, I, listening to the discussion, I could live with the current rule if that's where the council stands. And, you know, my other option would be to motion to amend this, to put it back to rules and policy. But I don't want to waste time and frankly, because we're switching councils, the next Rules and Policy Committee meeting won't meet probably until December. And at that point, I don't know if it has any effect for volunteers who would want to re-up that would now be ineligible because they might have reached their term limit.
So, and so I'll weigh in before I ask for a vote or we look for amendments. Number, first and foremost, you did, you just spoke to the process piece that had not quite been articulated, I don't think. Just that we are coming into a season where there's going to be some turnover on the council, but also the regularity of our committees and our meetings dies down in November and December, which then leads us into January. And so when Counselor Anderson brought this to leadership, again, it's in our charter that any counselor can do so at any time. So procedurally, he is certainly within his right to bring this forward. And I understood the rationale of this is either coming forward in this manner now, given that Rules and Policy did not have a meeting scheduled, or this isn't going to come forward. And I felt like it was valuable enough to bring forward. And so I, I certainly supported Counselor Anderson doing so. Secondly, I just want to make the point, I, as our public speaker pointed out, I voted against this last time and I have not changed my position on that. I think that we have mechanisms in place to appoint new, fresh people who apply. Their application is in the packet, right alongside those that have served the community for nine-plus years. I think that your point is well-taken, that it can feel uncomfortable to not reappoint someone who is currently sitting on the committee. But I think that there is some value in shifting our perspective on that as a council. Like maybe that shouldn't be the norm as the council, that we just automatically re-up somebody. And so if we challenge that perspective and everyone's applications carry equal weight, I feel like there's not really a, a reason or a need to, to institute a barrier, as John put it, that would allow someone to, or not allow someone to reapply if they wanted to continue to serve a committee. And so for those reasons, I am in favor of removing term limits. But I also am sensitive to the will of the council and, and I will call the vote or I will ask for amendments, whatever you guys would like to do. Okay, I will call for a vote then. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion fails five-two. I, yes. Where are we in our agenda? At this point, I do feel like our next few items might garner some public engagement. And we have a council requesting a short break. And so we will go ahead and take a short recess and we will come back to finish out the rest of our agenda. Thank you.
There we go. All right. Welcome back, everybody. Thank you, John. We are on to order number 25-099. First reading and schedule a public hearing on the proposed new chapter 1020 of the Town of Scarborough Short Term Rental Registration. And we have our Planning Director Autumn Spear here. Heat this up for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the short-term rental ordinance, I did put a presentation together because we have been talking about it for two and a half years. And so this is just the process recap. This year, we started talking about it again in April, and then we went to ordinance committee three different times. We went to ordinance committee last Wednesday, and they did recommend moving it to the full council with a 3-0. The back and forth really had to do with the safety inspections. And so what you have before you in your packet tonight, it's an annual registration process. It does define short-term rentals as those uses 28 days and less. It allows short-term rentals where residential uses are permitted with no caps. It keeps existing accessory dwelling unit rules in place. And then safety inspections are required initial and every three to five years thereafter. And there would be an annual fee, and that needs to be determined by you all. So let's just go quickly through this. The purpose statement, again, this is, this has gone through several iterations, but this is really about requiring this registration so we can create a format so the town can discern if there are issues that we need to take further action on for short-term rentals. And the applicability, sorry. Um, this is really helpful. We have a policy in place now about short-term rentals, but this really specifically defines where you can and cannot do short-term rentals. So short-term rental would be allowed in any legal or habitable residential space. Those are the easy things, but what they're not allowed in, they're not allowed in tents, they are not allowed in sheds, they are not allowed in RVs. And so that will be really helpful so we don't have those conversations. This does not apply to hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, or lodging and housing and campgrounds. So the registration requirements are fairly simple. Name, address, some information about the dwelling, the type of short-term rental, if it's owner occupied or non-owner occupied. There's an item about three quarters of the way down that's in bold. We did receive a request at ordinance committee that I would feel really comfortable with if you all removed the word "condition" from that item. This is a requirement to require an emergency contact with a 90-minute response time. And there were some concern from the public that that they didn't want to be caught about the condition overnight. And that was not the intention of this. This was really meant to be a safety number for the town to have. So that would be an amendment that I would recommend removing the word "condition." The safety compliance is very simple. It basically requires smoke alarms in each bedroom, outside the sleeping areas. There's a requirement for a carbon monoxide detector if there are certain situations in the facility, and fuel gas detector likewise, if there's a certain setup for that. And at least one portable fire extinguisher. So these are the safety compliance requirements. And the safety inspection would basically involve the code enforcement officer and the fire enforcement or combination thereof. We've made it more generic so that it's just a safety inspection. So depending on availability, either of those departments can review these things. Initially, when you come into register, you would register through the town clerk. And once that's approved, we would put you in a queue for an inspection, and it would happen within 45 days. And then we would put you on a list basically every three to five years, or if the property is turned over in ownership. So the town clerk reviews and receives those applications. She then would, she or he at the time would then distribute them to the code enforcement officer, the police chief, the fire chief, and the tax collector, much like we do for other licenses and registrations in town. And then once all that comes back with no issues, it would be granted. And then, as I mentioned, they would get queued up for that scheduling for that safety inspection. So there's an expiration and renewal. It follows our other processes. The registration would expire in December, and you would have 45 days to renew. If you didn't renew, I believe the way it is, if you renew in November and December, you get till the next, the following December. Oh, I've always proposed a 12-month grace period to start this registration process, and I continue to propose that. That's ultimately up to you all. But having some sort of allowance for, it goes into effect January 1st, 2026, but then we have until December of 2026 to make sure we get everyone compliance. Because there is going to be, we have some groups in town that it will be really easy to make those contacts, but for those people that are out of town and may not have been aware of this, it'll give them that ample time. There's a violations and penalties. It's pretty simple. There's a violation for operating or advertising without valid registration. And then the other, providing your false or misleading information in your application. So in summary, it's an annual process, once a year. It's through January through December timeframe typically. It only applies to those short-term rentals. Accessory dwelling units, you cannot currently do a short-term rental in an accessory dwelling unit or in the primary residence that has an accessory dwelling unit. And by accessory dwelling unit, I mean it is permitted as an accessory dwelling in it, and you checked the affidavit that you would not do this. That doesn't change. And then safety inspections and annual fees. So next steps, if you all move this forward, it would go to town council, public hearing, and possibly the Chapter 311 would also come with that for the fee on November 5th. And then November 19th, you could do second reading and adoption of the registration ordinance and Chapter 311 to establish the fees. And then again, I'm recommending that 12-month cycle for the grace period to have people comply. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you put that slide back up about the timeline? Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the motion is in line with your timeline, just because we are going to have council turnover. And so John and I had talked at leadership about trying to make sure that we didn't have any outstanding business that would roll over to that meeting on the 19th. But I think that that's okay to just acknowledge that this is one that if we did a separate public hearing, that that would be the outcome, just so that everyone's clear.
More of a clarification, because I know during ordinance committee, we were hemming and hawing over three- to five-year inspection time period, but staff, I think, very eloquently described why you wanted that. Do you just mind elaborating on that a little?
Um, if I recall, it was really more for a safety inspection process. Tom, you might have to help me on this one. It's been a long day.
I think it was really just to build in flexibility on the part of staff. It's for our convenience, and I think in doing so, we're assuming the responsibility to schedule those. And we just want to make sure we give ourselves some flexibility.
Right. And I don't want to feed you, but my understanding was that if you have a brand-new home, you don't want to go back in three years. It's not worthwhile for staff to go back to a brand-new home in three years. And so I just kind of wanted to have that relief.
The Assistant Town Manager is also ready to drop in.
I think the risk profile for properties were different. And to your point, Counselor Shoup, a newer construction with more modern code might require less follow-up than one that might be of a different profile.
Thank you. Any other questions for Autumn? Thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? If so, you can approach the podium, and please state your name and address for the public record.
Good evening. My name is Sean Flaherty, Blackpoint Road. I've been a resident of Scarborough for nearly, for all of my 40 years. And over the past 20 years, I've had the privilege to represent my neighbors as their state representative. I've served multiple terms on various town committees, including the Conservation Committee, the Parks and Land Board, and I think the first-ever Energy Committee some years ago. I address the council for the first time tonight in nearly a decade to urge your deeper consideration of this proposed new ordinance being introduced for the first time tonight. I call it a short-term rental inspection and licensure program, because that's what it is. This isn't about registration. And I call it that because it's defined, it's certainly not voluntary, like was discussed at previous meetings and part of this process. It has no, and I mean no exceptions, for everyday normal citizens who just want occasionally rent out their home to bring in a few extra bucks. As some residents have said at the previous meetings, they rent out their homes for a few weeks each summer, literally to cover the taxes, so that they can keep that property in their family at Higgins Beach or Pine Point or somewhere else. That is about preserving neighborhoods. That is about keeping the culture of our community alive, which has gone on at Higgins Beach specifically for more than 100 years. Personally, my family started renting down at Higgins Beach before my parents moved to Scarborough in the 1980s. And so now, for nearly 50 years, there have been at least one member of my family, extended family cousins, grandparents, who have rented at Higgins Beach for at least two to three weeks every single year. There is a culture, and there's a community down there that exists long before a short-term rental ordinance was even considered, or before this Airbnb craze has gone on. The disastrous overreach of this would go into the culture of our community. A culture that has existed literally for generations. As drafted, the ordinance seeks to address an issue for which there is a notable lack of concern. Tonight, it was said to discern if there are any issues was the purpose of this new registration. If there's no issues, why are we moving forward with essentially a licensure, an enforcement, an inspection program for everyday homeowners? This would require certainly much more than just lifelines and a few smoke detectors. It already requires a permit to have an electrician come into your home in this town. So if you have to add additional smoke detectors in places that may not be, you know, an unhabitated basement or attic, you name it. It certainly is not something that is going to be fixed overnight in this town by a contractor for a reasonable price at either properties at Higgins Beach. You can't advertise, so you can't even decide if you think your property might be available to be a short-term rental before you're in violation of this ordinance. And as drafted, in the memo that you've read about this process, I want to point out, there's one bolded word. It said, "The vast majority of public comment to this point has been in opposition." Listen to those of us who have been in this town for generations who have continued this type of short-term rental to friends and family, and make some exceptions. If your property has a homestead exemption, why are you being treated the same way as a hotel or a business? If you only operate one Airbnb, why are you being treated the same way as someone who operate, outside group of investors who operate three or four? There's absolutely no reason for a one-size-fits-all approach in this particular ordinance. And I would respectfully ask you to take some more time, think about this, and perhaps the next council can have more public concern and actually draft something that addresses issues that are of concern. We've got a lot of rules and ordinances already on our properties, and if there are issues, let's enforce those. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other public comment?
April Hill, Maple Avenue. I fully support a short-term rental registration process. However, there's a glaring oversight, and that is zoning. As I said to the ordinance committee last week, registering a car doesn't mean I can park it wherever I want. Likewise, registering a short-term rental shouldn't make it an accepted use of a house anywhere in town. Short-term rentals in beach areas predate zoning and are consistent with the character of the neighborhoods. However, non-owner occupied Airbnbs and other residential neighborhoods is a more recent commercial use that is not consistent with the character of those communities. I recently learned that Scarborough has what's called a prohibitory zoning ordinance. That means if something isn't specifically permitted, it's prohibited. The town manager even stated at the last ordinance committee meeting in response to a different agenda item that, quote, "As a general construct in our zoning ordinance, an item is prohibited by omission," end quote. "Airbnbs are omitted from our current zoning ordinance." I have read the town attorney's response to my challenge. He stated that there are no provisions in our zoning that would prohibit the rental of residential dwelling units for any period of time except for ADUs. But our zoning defines bed and breakfast as an owner-occupied dwelling with six guest rooms or less that provides lodging and breakfast service to transient guests who stay no more than 28 days. And those B&amp;Bs are expressly prohibited in residential zones R2, 3, and 4. And unlike B&amp;Bs, many Airbnbs do not even have the owners living in them. This is not incidental business use of a home, another requirement in our zoning for our residential districts. Despite this, in 2017, the town quietly created a short-term rental policy that acknowledges that Airbnbs aren't in our zoning, but that they could occur in any district where dwelling is located, as long as breakfast isn't served. Focusing on blueberry pancakes versus the omission of Airbnbs from our zoning and the negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood is wrong. This conclusion appears to have been a de facto zoning amendment that was never vetted through a public process, which is required by state law. Opinion should never be treated as ordinance. Some of you have told me that we should give Airbnbs in these residential neighborhoods a year to see if there are complaints. But compatibility with the residential character of our neighborhoods doesn't change over time. Compliance with registration doesn't make Airbnbs consistent with the quiet community character of historically residential areas away from the beach. The town council has stated in its comprehensive plan and growth ordinance that one of the top priorities is to protect the character of existing neighborhoods. I ask you to uphold that promise, as well as the integrity of our zoning rules and procedures. The new registration should repeal the current short-term rental policy and uphold the existing zoning moving forward, which is that Airbnbs are prohibited in the R2, 3, and 4 districts away from the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and go to Tim, because I saw his hand pop up online, and then I'll come back to those of you in the room. Tim, if you unmute, you should be able to speak.
You're right. Can you hear me okay now?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, great. So this ordinance is intended to provide a registration program that enables...
I'm sorry, Tim. Can you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Tim Lambert, Iris Drive, Scarborough. So this ordinance is intended to provide a registration program that enables the town to monitor impacts on neighborhoods within the town of Scarborough. How does the town establish a baseline, is my question, one of my questions? How do you measure the impact? And then what do you do? The proposed registration process does not regulate short-term rentals in Scarborough. The registration process implies that short-term rentals should be allowed anywhere in Scarborough. However, that should not be the case. There were certain areas in town, such as Higgins Beach, Pine Point, Kraut's Neck, the beach areas, that are natural tourist areas, and these are the places where you would expect to have short-term rentals. And why not allow short-term rentals in ADUs in these areas as well? Why are we saying we can't, you know, have short-term rentals in ADUs? But then there are the neighborhoods where residents go about their daily lives in the community away from the beaches. You know, we're raising our kids, baseball yards, baseball games in our backyard and all that stuff. The town should be doing all they can to ensure homes in these neighborhoods are available for people who want to establish a residency in Scarborough. These neighborhoods weren't developed with tourism in mind. They were developed with our community in mind. As most people are aware, affordable homes in southern Maine and, you know, all over Maine are harder, getting harder to come by. By opening up the floodgates and saying, you know, you can have an Airbnb anywhere you want in Scarborough, you're inviting investors to buy up property in the town for their short-term rental businesses. And that exacerbates the situation of having available housing for people who want to live here year-round. Disinviting this type of use in Scarborough neighborhoods is one small step that the town council can take to keep investors out and to promote homeownership. And that's all I have to say, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Back to the room. Anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Hi, folks. Nick McGee, Eight River Woods Drive. Thanks for having me here tonight. Kind of bring a unique perspective to this, because this discussion and the impetus behind some of this started when I was sitting on the council and actually was, I think, Chair of Ordinance at the time when it first made the rounds. So I've seen it. And then, on the other hand, professionally, I've been a property manager. I own a property management company. So I also understand the professional impact this could have on those property managers out there that are dealing with short-term rentals as part of their livelihood. So I don't own beachfront property yet, but I'm sure I would, I can be sensitive to that as well. I agree with Mr. Lambert. Like, you want to see us protect our neighborhoods. I mean, the worst nightmare for me is to have a neighbor in my cul-de-sac that's constantly got a one-week, there's a new faces, and I've got little kids playing in the yard. That doesn't sound like home to me. And I think we got to be cautious of that. But I also feel like at this stage, where we're at with this community, this is the lowest bar you could possibly set for anyone to just come into compliance. We're asking you to, once a year, fill out some paperwork. I assume it's going to be a relatively small fee. Let us know you're doing this. And that's a good place to start. And I don't think there's any shame in saying this is somewhere to start. So I think you struck a right balance with this. My opinion, it's not going to go far enough. And I'm sure if I'm a beach, you know, on the beachfront, this is annoying. If I'm a property manager, this is super annoying, because the last thing I want is more procedures, more paperwork in my life. So I think you're doing what the bare minimum is, and I think it's an appropriate first step. So that was my comments on this, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Scott Townsend, Acorn Lane. I'm a short-term rental owner. I own a business that is, I'm a part-owner in a business that's involved in quite a few short-term rentals in the Higgins Beach area. I'm also a Realtor, and I took an oath to protect the rights of homeowners. And I feel that this is an infringement on it, because ordinances don't get less restrictive. They only get more restrictive. I've been speaking in front of three different ordinances committees over the past two and a half years. And, you know, frankly, I'm getting a little tired of it, and you guys might be getting tired of me by now. But for the counselors that are new to this topic, I just want to explain why it's taken so long. So when the town council first charged the ordinance committee to look into short-term rentals, it was to basically create a simple, the word "simple" registration process, so the town could get an idea of how many properties out there were short-term rentals. And what's happened is every ordinance committee has evolved it into something more than it was supposed to be. And in fact, in July this year, Councilor Donovan asked the question, "How did we get here? Like, why is it taking so long? Why am I looking at seven pages of stuff?" And he charged, you know, to say, "Come back with a simple registration process." And then again, the fire department, they were enjoying vacation when others were at a meeting. You know, they said, "Well, we think there needs to be safety issues in there." And then it starts to evolve, and now we're at a five-page document. And I'm a big proponent of the words we use. The fire department was like, "Well, every other license in the town needs an inspection." Well, this isn't a license. It's a registration process. And even a lot of people using the term Airbnb, that's like saying that every soda out there is a Coke. Every short-term rental is not an Airbnb. There's professional managers involved. There's people that use it, and you have a right to do that in your property. So I just want to give you an idea of why we've come this far. So for all those reasons, I'm actually opposed to what is being presented here, because I think it does go too far. I think we need to start as a simple registration process and then get a stage of where things are at from there. Measure complaints, measure that information. And as Sean mentioned, I've been at these meetings most of the time of, I would say, over 80% of the people are speaking out against it. If you were to move forward, I would really urge you to consider the unintended consequences. There does need to be a grace period. I mean, we're already, by the end of this month, we start booking our return renters for next year. So none of the properties we manage are going to have licenses when we're, when we're doing that. That's our, that's our flow of business, and that's probably not going to change. So I need you guys to really think about that. The other part is the 90-minute response time that's been talked about. If that is something in there, it should be during the town ordinance of when we don't have quiet hours. I think it's like 7:00, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, if I'm not mistaken. So I think, you know, between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, you should be able to get a 90-minute response. But at 3:00 AM, nobody needs me. Maybe my dog to go outside to the bathroom, because he ate something he shouldn't have. But nobody needs me at 3:00 AM. They need the police. They need the fire department, or they need rescue. They don't need... So I don't really think that that needs to be in there. And I think it does need to be, you know, consistent, because it should be every three years, or every four years, or every five years, every six years, or when the property's sold. But I would argue that some, our properties are probably safer than some homes that are only five years old. Those annoying hard-wired smoke detectors are overly sensitive. They get unplugged. And I would... And I would argue that our rental properties that get inspected twice a year by our team and our safety standards that we have are safer than the average home out there in Scarborough. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Keep them coming.
Drop my timer. There you go. Katie Foley, seven eight Acorn Lane. Also a business owner and partner of Scott Townsend, we're HigginsBeachMaine.com and Scott and Sunny Townsend Real Estate Team. So we're here wearing both of those hats as a Realtor and as business owners of short-term rentals. Most important question of the night, how many meetings do you have left, April? I knew it. I obviously would concur with all of the comments made by Mr. Townsend and some of the, and I had some of the same pieces. So I'm not going to reiterate that. But I did want to just share perspective because as you know, I've been in your seat. And one of the things that I learned as a counselor that was a tough lesson to learn was that sometimes we spend a lot of time on an issue. And because it's spent in a committee for two years, we feel like, oh, it's fully vetted. It's perfect. It's exactly what needs to be and we need to move this issue forward. I would argue that the people who were involved in the ordinance committee, the last two cycles, they've been in the weeds with this. So it's like secondhand to them. But not all of you have heard all of the testimony, all of the other accounts that have come forward. And I would concur that overwhelmingly over the last two and a half years, what most people were willing to support and what we believed were, was going to happen was a simple registration process. And that has evolved. I would also somewhat agree with, with Nick that you have backed it down a bit. I did share with the ordinance committee some language, one of my big concerns, if you are moving forward with the inspection piece, is I want to make sure that the code officer and the fire department are required to work together so that those are, that's not two different inspections. And I just didn't see that language change in there, but that's something to consider as an amendment moving, if you move forward with that. What was the other thing? Scott addressed the 90 minutes. I think he addressed all the other pieces. I mean, I will tell you, we were very concerned a bit about the handling, the logistics of the fire inspection and the code enforcement officer. And honestly, the more we talked about it, we thought, you know what? This is actually fantastic because it's one of, if you're, if you're a business owner of short-term rentals, one of your biggest nightmares is a fire like you just, we just heard about that happened in Portland, right? So if I have the town now coming in and performing safety inspections and I have a fire at one of my properties, now I'm not the only one who has some skin in the game and liability there. So I don't know if that's been discussed, passed by your attorney or not, but it, it started to actually make me as a business owner feel better that you were going to share that responsibility with me. So I'm okay with it. I'd prefer it to go back to a simple registration process, of course, and not feel like you have to push this through as is without some changes, simply because it's been worked on for two and a half years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Hamel, Bay Street in Pine Point. I do have a short-term rental. And I have watched this thing and participated in most of these meetings. And, and I was watching it even before it ever came to the council. In fact, probably 10 years ago, a gentleman got up, an older man who had lived on Ocean View Road, lived there all his life. And he said, he knew his next door neighbor was, had maybe recently passed away and that things were going to be different with the new, his new neighbor. But what he didn't realize is he was going to have a hotel next door. And because it had been sold to somebody who was doing short-term rentals out of, you know, this is, and if you know Ocean View, it's one of the, it's not right in Pine Point. It's up, it's up Pine Point Road. It has been traditionally a normal residential neighborhood, not part of the beach community. I want to thank the town, the council for moving this forward. And I, I appreciate the careful, thoughtful process and the significant time that staff has devoted to getting it right. I hope this registration step is just the beginning. And I urge the town to move forward next, limiting short-term rentals to the areas where they have historically existed. Across coastal Maine and in other high-demand vacation areas like ski towns, we've seen the steady conversion of year-round housing into short-term rentals. Scarborough has had a long, has had concentrations of seasonal rentals forever at Higgins Beach and Pine Point. But now we are seeing short-term rentals spread into our traditional neighborhoods. A quick look at an Airbnb or VRBO map and you'll see that they're really all over town. We need to preserve the housing we have and prevent investors from turning what were once starter homes into year-round rental businesses. I collected, I followed newspaper articles for years about what was happening all along the coast. And the Bar Harbor Town Planner was quoted saying, if you're going to real, going to reel vacation rentals back, you have to do it as soon as possible. Once that train leaves the station, it's extremely difficult to bring it back. Thank you for your thoughtful work. I do hope the council take the next step to protect Scarborough's neighborhoods and housing stock. And I, I do want to just also say that maybe 80% of the comments, 80% of the people who have showed, shown up at these meetings were against this. But that doesn't mean that that's, as I heard someone say tonight, that doesn't mean that's where the public stands. There are plenty of people who are in favor of this. In Pine Point, come down there in the summer on a Saturday night and see what's going on. It's the first night of the, you know, of the weekly rental. And it can be a little crazy. We, we do not, our rentals in Pine Point are not all professionally managed. They are lots of do-it-yourselfers like myself. And it's different. Thanks.
Thank you.
Denise Hamilton, two Rod Road. I had written something, but I'm going to scratch that and just make this very brief. I think the beach communities for short-term rentals is where it belongs. Putting them into regular neighborhoods, whether it's my neighborhood or April's neighborhood, that's changing the character of the neighborhood families. We live in a neighborhood where one of our neighbors has a revolving door of friends, doing burnouts on roads, loud parties, bonfires in their backyard. And that's not something that's good for the family neighborhood. And by having these short-term rentals, you do risk those things happening. I think the beach community is where these short-term rentals belong. And until we have zoning saying where they're prohibited, right now they're, they can be town-wide. And if you say, well, we're going to do this registration process now, if it becomes a problem, we'll look at zoning. Well, then my concern there is those people are now grandfathered. And that's going to be their argument. So it's, let's put zoning in place and say, where are they allowed? Or where are they prohibited and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none and seeing no more online, I will close public comment. Before I ask for a motion to put this on the floor, I do need to make a disclosure statement this evening. My husband writes short-term rental software. And for that reason, without counsel objection, I will be recusing myself from both the discussion and the vote this evening. With that, do I have a motion? Counsel discussion. Yes, Counsel Anderson.
This one really hurts my head. You know, I, I, I think everybody's bringing up such good points tonight. And, you know, I, I, I'm trying to keep things simple in my brain and just ask myself like, what is the problem we're trying to solve or the opportunity? And I, I'm not sure I see how, what we have in front of us solves anything. It is kind of like a first step, as some have said, but a step to what and what are we really trying to achieve? In my mind, I think the problem or opportunity statement is what some other speakers have said, which is where, where should we have short-term rentals in our community? I know some people have expressed significant concern about non-owner occupied short-term rentals and the proliferation of those across our community that would really impact our affordable housing stock, which I think is, is very concerning and something we need to address. So as, as one of the speaker said, I know there's been so much work on this and I'm, I, I going to look at Autumn because I know she's spent a lot of time on this. And I think just tonight, I'm just not, it's not connecting with me, like why we're doing this. And so I would, I probably will vote no on this tonight. And then for the next council, as we continue our conversations on growth, I would really like to see us have a conversation about where STRs fit. I 100% support them being at the beaches, letting them manage the way they do. I do have a little bit of a concern about not having STRs outside of the beaches because I want to respect that this is personal property that people have. And if somebody outside of the beaches, as was talked about today, wants to, you know, rent their house for a couple of weeks of the year and be able to use that to help pay their property taxes or whatever they need to do, like I, I feel like they should have that option. So I'm a little torn in terms of where they should be. When this originally started, from what I recall, at the very, 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 very beginning, was when LD 2003 went into place. And I think we, we were concerned that something would happen with STRs, which hasn't really come into fruition in any community. So I think that was the original impetus for why we started this. And so I think that was the problem statement at the time and that problem statement, again, hasn't come to fruition. So I just, I really think I'm not going to support this tonight. But I would encourage us as part of our growth conversation to have, look more at the zoning.
Thank you. Counsel Shoup.
Sure. So we had a comment about the inspections. We actually changed the language. So it's just one inspection, but we didn't want it. So it's just an inspection by a safety officer. So it would either be the police, the fire or the code enforcement or them together, but it would be one inspection. So we did change it. Maybe it doesn't read right. But I just, I wanted to first address that because I did feel like I addressed it, but it's in there. So I'm in support of this tonight. You know, I do feel like we have a, you know, one of our goals is to protect the integrity of the neighborhoods and things like that. I just, you know, we are a beach community. And so I just want to list, you know, we didn't, we put a lot of thought behind this. So other towns that have short-term rental ordinances, which actually have like, not just registrations, but consequences for being a bad renter, that includes not all of them. But these are the towns that actually have short-term rental ordinances right now, which include Bar Harbor, Cape Elizabeth, Falmouth, Freeport, Kennebunk, Kittery, Saco, and South Portland. So this isn't new. This is something that other towns have been doing. And it's a safety thing. And I think that's why, I think you saw the ebbs and flows of the ordinance go from, we just want a registration to we want a registration with inspections to consequences and vines to we just want a registration. And then, you know, I, I have to respect the fact that we, we fight, we hire professionals. We have a fire chief who is like every other transient rental property in this town that is commercial has a safety inspection. And I appreciate that their job and our job is to make sure that everyone living in Scarborough and that visits Scarborough is in a safe community. I think this summer, we were reading an article about a rental that burned down in Cape Cod and people died because it was a short-term rental and they lied on their self-inspection about having smoke detectors. And I think for me as a counselor, I do not want to have that headline, especially if we sat here and spent two years working on a registration and then said, let's just not do it. So I think that's concerning to me. I just looked up and my neighbor has their accessory dwelling unit listed as an Airbnb. And I live in the Blue Point community. That is not a rental community. And I think that for me, I feel like we're maybe waiting to enforce some of the already illegal rentals and things that are going on in the community when they're already out there and they're happening. And so I think that's what's concerning to me. And I think we do, we, we said we have a housing shortage. So with a housing shortage, it's concerning with me that we're going to be taking more houses off of the market, not available to people to live in, reside and establish residency in our town. And so, you know, with that being said, I think this is a good first step. I think we've heard comments tonight that clearly we have to figure out where short-term rentals would be best. I think the first step is to figure out where they're located and understand what's happening within them. I, I appreciate that we have some good rental property businesses in town, but unfortunately we have a lot of rentals that are not under their guise, I mean, under their control and things like that. And so I think this is a, a good first step to get a pulse of what's going on in our community and then be able to preserve the neighborhoods that are already being negatively impacted by them.
Thank you. Other counsel comment? Counsel fellows?
Thank you. I agree that there, that there is inherent value in having a registration and inspection provision. I hear what Counselor Anderson is saying, and I think it's a good question that we should always ask ourselves, like, is this a solution in search of a problem? Is there a problem that we're actually trying to solve here or purporting to solve? And in my view, this, what I, what I believe to be a very relatively light touch, given some of the other things that some other communities do and that, and that we're on the table at various points here. As has, as, you know, Counselor Emeritus McGee said, it's sort of a, you know, a good minimum, minimum provision and, and first step. I think I may be conflating a couple of different comments there. And my sense from, from our ordinance conversations, including public comment, was that there was, there, there had been a coalescing around, you know, maybe people weren't wild about it, but there was a general acceptance that, okay, yes, this is a, this is a reasonable compromise. It's a reasonable first step. And I think it will, at the very least, help establish some standards and expectations. I think it's appropriate to give a great deal of preference to our public safety officials who are allowed to take vacation days too. I'm glad that we got their input better late than never in terms of inspection recommendations. And I, you know, I also want to say, I, I don't think any of us question, certainly I don't question the motives and behind why people rent their, their, their homes, whether they do it part-time or, or, or on a large, on a larger scale to, to pay for their property taxes or whatever it may be and be able to stay in their homes. But one thing that I, that I feel pretty strongly about is that, and I think there's been general agreement, certainly at ordinance, is that once you start charging people to stay in that property, that changes the nature of that, of that occupancy and what you're doing. And I think it's perfectly appropriate to have some minimal level of accountability and, and safety. And I think that it will also hopefully equip us with more data and, and just a better lay of the land so that we can dig further into some of these other questions. And as somebody who cares a lot about affordable housing, I shared some of the concerns about the potential impacts of Airbnb's particularly away from the, from the beach communities. But we can't do it just based on vibes and anecdote. I mean, I, I think it, I think by having this registration process, seeing how it operates and hopefully getting our arms around the scope of what's happening, it'll equip us to further those, those bigger picture conversations. I do, I do have mixed feelings sometimes when I hear people talk about neighborhood character because that can be very subjective. I know just speaking for myself, I have some great neighbors. I probably know 2% of the people on my street. I don't know what they do. I don't know. I don't keep track of their comings and goings. And it's honestly none of my business. And if they're causing a disruption, we have, we have ways to address that. So I'm, I, I want to be careful about that, but I do think that there are some legitimate concerns about fundamentally changing neighborhoods and potential market impacts. So I'll support this. This is first reading. My understanding is that there'll be a public hearing as well. And there'll be opportunities for, for other input and other tweaks. Just one final comment before I forget on the, on the emergency contact. Emergency is the key there. We're not talking about, there's a light bulb out or something like that. And so, and we're also not talking about, at least in my mind, noise complaints, or at least exclusively noise complaints. We're talking about, and the fire chief and the deputy chief talked about. We're talking about, and the fire chief and the deputy chief talked about this. If there's an emergency that they have to respond to, who can they get a hold of? That's really what we're talking about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other council comment, Councilor Kane.
Try not to be too long here. I really support the comments that came from the public tonight and sorry, let me start, I also have a disclosure. A shared owner at a cottage at Higgins Beach, an unwinterized cottage at Higgins Beach that my parents bought almost 50 years ago. And I share that with six siblings, six spouses and 29 children and their spouses. So it's roughly 40 people and we don't do short-term rentals. But in general, I'm a strong proponent of property rights up until the point that it impacts other property owners. And I think from a, talking about prohibiting things, the one that I would be strongly supporting a prohibition on is a non-occupied, and I don't mean just the owner as a way for the rental. If somebody has bought it strictly for the purpose of running a short-term rental program, either seasonally or year-round, that strikes me then is that's a business and it's a business operating in a residential neighborhood. I think the challenge that has been through this process all along and, and credit to Autumn for going through it and, and public safety, all of that. It's been to me one, a very good public process with a lot of opportunity for feedback. It's a unique position in Scarborough where there's, there's a very substantial traditional residential community and, and a somewhat substantial beach rental community. And they have very different concerns and needs. When you, when you talk about character, I agree that having somebody turning over a house next door to you every week, every two weeks is not in the character of a residential neighborhood. But I don't think you'd find anybody in the beach communities that is all surprised to find that their weekly rental is right next to them every week. That's part of that character and has been for 100 years. So I think our challenge is trying to have a one-size-fits-all that talks to all those different stakeholders. So with the current version of this, there's a number of things that, that I have some trouble with. Section, section G states a, a safety inspection performed every, performed every three to five years. I find that too vague, particularly for an ordinance. I, I think there's clarity needs to be around that. I'd even be okay that if it's three years, the shorter end of that. But I also believe that then any fee instead of annually should be tied to that three-year cycle. Because what you're, what this is doing is kind of saying, we need to systematically have these inspections. So therefore you could also have the, any required fee tied to that. The fire department had said they don't anticipate incurring overhead or additional staffing to take care of these inspections. So there's not an additional cost to the town. And so I don't think there should be an annual fee for, where there's no cost incurred by the town. And I also don't like the idea that the fee schedule, Autumn did mention that the fee schedule would be proposed at the same time as the final part of this. But I don't like the idea that I would be deciding on this ordinance without knowing what that fee schedule would be. The ordinance does lay out the fees for penalties. So it, it could be that also the fees are included right in here rather than the council doing that separately. I do understand that traditionally all those town fees and all are done on a schedule, which probably makes them easier to update, but I just didn't like the, that part of it. The grace period, well, I understand the idea of trying to get people to comply with this. But particularly if you have a fee associated with it, if you say that you've got, it's just going into effect and the fee is $100 and you have a year before you need to comply with this. Well, off the top of my head, I'm going to guess that 75% of the people don't comply with that until they have to. And therefore you're also backing up the goal of trying to gain information on, on these, where these properties are, how many there are. You're, you're backing up that timeline by a year through that grace period. So with that, you could have it be that if you sign up in the first 90 days, you don't have to pay the initial fee as an incentive to get people signed up. So all of that leads me to that I, I'd be a no vote on this tonight. If it were to pass, I'd suggest that we definitely push this off to like that November 19th meeting or something. The, anything on the 5th, the newly elected counselor will not, counselors would, would not even be seated yet. So I think that's, would be, and I would like the opportunity in that time to pull together some of these things, get more feedback, make amendments and, but for tonight, I would be a no vote. If it were to pass, I'd still want to make sure we have a robust conversation around any amendments.
Thank you. Point of information, if this passes at first reading, the action being suggested is to schedule a public hearing for November 5th. So no action on November 5th, just a public hearing. Other council comment, Councilor Donovan.
I'm not going to repeat the comments that were made by some of my fellow counselors because I agree with Counselor Fellows' remarks and those of Counselor Kane. And I think there's been some good suggestions as to how to tweak it to advance it. As I saw this, it's a proposal for a registration process and the chief would like to have us include some safety elements and that all made sense. We're going to look at the data that the registration process produces and then make a decision as to what kind of program of controls we might apply. And I mean, I live at Higgins Beach, so everybody rents at Higgins Beach. And, and we're all these beach communities. And so that's not why this is going forward. And I would be very content to have all the beach communities exempted. I don't know if that's the way we're going to end up working this out, but it's really, I like the fact that it's in short-term rentals, it's going to provide some safety. And that struck me when I heard it from the fire chief as a, a smart, a smart action on our part. But otherwise, this just moves us to a registration process so we can see where is it really prevalent in town? And I'll support it. And I agree with the comments that we need to look at some of the things that have been brought to our attention by speakers. I think several of those are worthy of consideration.
Thank you. Just as a further point of information for the council and for the public, given that I am going to recuse myself from the vote, a 3-3 vote would result in the motion failing, just so that everyone knows and is clear. Any other council comment? Scott.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm always opposed to more government. And this is, this is just red tape all the way through it. And, you know, I went to one, a year or two ago, we had a meeting on this and and they were bringing it up and there was a, a couple there, very nice people and they had an Airbnb next door to them. And they said, you know, the people next door were really loud and rowdy and everything and, and they didn't want to call the cops on them because they afraid they'd offend their neighbors. And it's like, you know, the neighbors aren't there, you're calling the cops on their rentals, you know? So we have ordinances in town to take care of all these issues, if there is any. And call the cops and you're not going to offend, if I was renting a house and the tenants were doing that, I'd say call the cops. But if you've called code enforcement on me, I'm going to be ticked off at my neighbor then. So I don't see how this helps and that's not an argument. I, I think people should be able to do what they want with their property. Now, when we get down to corporations, out-of-state corporations buying homes, I think that is our problem with starter homes. And if you have corporations buying homes and renting them, then maybe if something like that came forward, I'd hope for it. But individuals, taxpayers, people that live here year-round, I think in the, in the whole town too. I, you know, I grew up in, you know, in grain acres and, you know, if it was, it was rentals next door, whatever, it's, it's the neighbors, they're going to do it. They can do whatever they want with their home. The main mentality is, is just stick your nose in your own business and just live your life. So I, I don't like all of the registration fees and all of this extra stuff and extra work for the staff to do this and, you know, it just, we've got so many ordinances and so much stuff. And every time we turn around, we get these committees making more ordinances and I don't want them. So yeah, I adamantly oppose to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council comment? Yes.
Under our ordinances now, where are short-term rentals allowed? Because we have, I know when, at the ordinance committee, we were saying we have an exclusionary clause that if it's not like explicitly allowed. And so I can see the direction where this is going. And so I think if we're not going to do a registry, it might be helpful for us to understand currently where they're allowed. And maybe that could put some people's minds at ease if it's allowed in certain districts right now or not. Like I, you know, I'm looking at my neighbor with her Airbnb renting out half her house. And so I would love to get a registry just to be able to be like, is that allowed or not?
Based on our town attorney's findings, a short-term rental would be allowed anywhere residential dwelling would be allowed. Except.
I was going to say, Autumn, can you clarify that ADUs are not?
ADUs are not, you're not permitted to have a short-term rental and a permitted ADU. But if you get a short-term rental, there's no difference found between a residential home, we don't regulate how it's paid for. And so with that finding, a short-term rental is allowed throughout town in any of our residential districts.
Is it listed as a, it accepted use in the zones?
No.
And I guess that's, I would like clarification because at ordinance, we were like helicopters are not listed use in the zone, so it's, it's by not being listed, it's not allowed. And so I'm trying to see the difference between that and this.
And what I understand is the use itself is not seen as a different use than a residential home and it's still a residential home. It is just, we don't regulate how you are paying for that residential home. If you own it or you rent it, we don't differentiate. That's what we've been told is how it would work. And I think you all received an email this week from our town attorney.
Yeah, and I think that's what's confusing and I want to clarify because I think we got a little bit different at ordinance about if it's not explicitly allowed, it's not allowed. And so I just want to make sure we understand that.
I think the distinction is that the underlying use is still residential use, whether you have someone there for seven days or 12 months, the use is still residential. And so the fact that it's being rented on a short-term basis as opposed to a month-to-month basis or an annual basis, doesn't, doesn't make it any different. It's still a residential use. The exclusionary component around zoning was helicopters are, if it doesn't say it's allowed, it's prohibited. That's, the use is a helicopter, so it, so it doesn't allow for that. The use for, for Airbnb is a residential use in a residential area.
Okay.
That doesn't say that you couldn't put further restrictions on it. And when we started talking about this, we went through, should we limit these? Should we remove the beach areas? Should we limit the zoning districts that they're allowed? You know, there were conversations about should these be permitted in the rural farming district? And so we went through a lot of these topics that are coming up tonight. But ultimately, at least getting the registration process, because now when you do look at Airbnb or you look at VRBO and you see, and we have them everywhere. And ultimately, the idea was that we would at least know where they were and we would have a public list. So if someone was moving into a neighborhood, they could look at that list and say, oh, I'm going to buy that house and there are three, maybe they can make that choice. It's, having that available was the first start to this. And then we could see what we could do in the future if there was a problem to Counselor Anderson's. If there is a significant problem, it also would give us the ability to track complaint calls for noises. We don't have any cross-reference ability right now. So if we get complaint calls about a certain address on Broad Turn Road, it's, as far as we know from a public safety perspective, it's a residential home. That's what's an allowed use, great. But if we determine that it's actually a short-term rental because of this registration process, then we can say, oh, this is actually a problem and we might need to look into that further.
Okay.
Counselor Kane, before I acknowledge you, there's all kinds of parliamentary procedure happening. It is now 10:00 PM. And so I am going to accept a motion to suspend our rules that the council does not take up new business after 10:00 PM.
So, second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, I will call the vote. Oh, yes, Counselor Fellows.
I don't know if this is parliament, or parliamentally appropriate, but just putting it out there, should there be any consideration of changing the order of the remaining items in the agenda? Or is the intent to finish the agenda?
The, the intent would be to finish the agenda.
Thank you.
Yep. Good question. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I show that is unanimous. Thank you. Back to our regularly scheduled programming, we are currently discussing short-term rentals.
I just had one more comment.
Yes, I'm, I'm not going to call the vote, I promise. Counselor Kane.
I just wanted to be clear, I'm not, I'm not saying there should never be anything about registration and safety. I just don't think this version is ready. And I would hope that if we move towards this, there would be a concurrent effort through, I believe it would be through zoning, to try to define some of these uses and the areas that they could be in.
Thank you. Other council discussion? Counselor Doherty.
But we, you know, if, if you want to bring it forward, I've made it very clear that I don't want to, but you know, you have to, committees or somebody, we have to have something brought forward that maybe would work. And I guess I outlined what would work. So I guess what I said and what Sean said is what we should probably bring forward in the future. If somebody wants to organize that.
Counselor Fellows.
Very quickly.
Certainly.
I'm still a yes on this first reading. I'm certainly open to, to amendments and tweaks. I'm open to further consideration of the, you know, is it every two, three, four years? There were a couple other good points that Counselor Kane brought up. But that's where I am. Thank you.
Certainly.
Yeah, I, I'm willing to do amendments if it doesn't. I mean, I, we, this has been going on for years and I think that's where it's hard for you to show up right at the end after all this and do that. And I think if we can maybe try to come to a compromise, I, I don't want to send this back and start at scratch. And I think that's, I feel like we're very close and I wish you'd come to ordinance and probably we could have done it there. And I think that's why I was doing the comments about the inspection spirit and period because I, you know, I, I do appreciate, because I think that was some of the feedback we were getting. But, you know, I think we do have residents that we have been actively hearing from who are actively dealing with Airbnbs that are problems. And so if this doesn't pass, I, I want to know how we can help them. Because I, you know, I'm, you know, I'm seeing it on Airbnb that there are rentals, ADUs being rented and things like that. And so I think we need to get a pulse, but if we could find a compromise that would be able to move this forward, I think that would be worthwhile considering the amount of time that staff and people have been putting into this.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I, I appreciate the work and thought that people have gone into this. And again, I think sometimes, as, as someone mentioned, we tend to look at like the sunk cost of all the effort and try and make a choice based on that. But in reality, I'm like sitting here thinking, down the road, we have this data, it says where things are. But that doesn't change the fact that that person that has concerns outside of Higgins Beach continues to have those concerns and so are, are the beach communities. So I feel like, again, I don't see how having that data is going to get rid of the problem that we actually need to address. And so again, I'm, I'm of the mind that let's, through, through our conversations around growth, as we look at zoning and look at uses, keep this as one of those things that we need to assess as we look and, and ultimately decide whether we want certain types of STRs in our zoning or, or not. Because I think that's really what people are asking for. I think the comments we heard tonight were coming from certain zones where people are like, hey, I don't think it belongs here and we need to have that conversation. And others are like, hey, we've been doing it forever, like why are we changing things? And so for me, I just, I, I feel like even if we did this, I don't know how it's going to give me new information other than knowing what we have, but that doesn't change the fact that there are concerns or no concerns that, that need to get it. But that doesn't change the fact that there are concerns or no concerns that, that need to get addressed. And so I just don't see how our registration process is gonna fix things.
Thank you. Other council comment? Counselor Kane?
Just respond to Counselor Shoup's comments that I did watch the ordinance meeting. I wasn't at it. And I've been involved in this process since long before I was elected to council. So I, I do feel like both the versions and the intent of the ordinance has evolved over time with lots of public input. And my position on it has evolved over time to thinking that the safety and registration process is not the end of the world. It's just, I'm saying, and I said with appreciation for all the work that was done by both the committee and by staff, that just this version isn't ready, I don't think. And so, but I'm not against it forever and ever. And I would like to see a more stringent effect to the maybe zoning side of this as well.
Thank you. Other council comment? With that, I will call the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Those that are abstaining? The motion fails. Thank you. At this time, we are on to order number 25-100. First reading and schedule a public hearing to consider a new ordinance, Chapter 1106, the Tree Care Ordinance. Autumn is here to tee this up.
Liam, do you keep kicking me out of the meeting? I keep losing.
I'll just talk to you. So this is the Tree Care Ordinance. You all have a council goal, 2025 goal to develop and implement environmental protection and climate change initiatives that protect our environment and enhance our resiliency. And one of the actionable tasks were to explore a Tree City initiative and discuss the creation of a tree board. And so Tree City USA is an Arbor Day Foundation in cooperation with the USDA. It's a program that recognizes towns and cities across America that meet the standards of the Tree City USA program. And the Tree City USA program has four annual requirements. A tree board or department, public tree care ordinance, an annual expenditure of $2 per capita and an Arbor Day observation. And so we looked at, we did a workshop on September 3rd and we talked about those requirements. And then we went back to ordinance committee with a draft tree care ordinance that addressed the two of those components. And that would be the public tree care ordinance and then the establishment of a tree care board. So the Conservation Commission reviewed the draft and had the discussion February 26, 2025, April 30th, 2025, and then May 28th, 2025. So out of those discussions, we created that draft ordinance. And then at ordinance committee last Wednesday, they voted to move it to the full council for your consideration. And in your packet, the tree care ordinance is included. The purpose statement is, it's quite lengthy, but it's really to preserve and enhance Scarborough's natural beauty and encourage healthy ecosystems to provide air cooling and purification, carbon sequestration, stormwater management, and to protect public health and safety. And this ordinance, it's important to note that it only applies to public rights away and town-owned properties for, I'd say 95% of the ordinance. So we're talking about our public right of way and parks with this ordinance. So the administration is really shared. The town arborist, that's a position that we have right now in Public Works would essentially be the overseer or their designee. And then there would also be a tree care advisory board created out of this ordinance. And that would be a board, I know I said earlier, no more committees, guilty. Now I won't have room on the slide. So that would make 19. So this tree care advisory board would be a group of five regular members with two alternates and they would be required to meet four times per year. And they have a specific set of things that they are tasked with. Much of that has to do with helping to plan an Arbor Day celebration. That's also a requirement of this Tree City designation. So the ordinance itself, there's a bit of meat to it and it includes public landscape standards that have to do with creating tree planting standards. So species, spacing, and how they are actually installed is outlined in the ordinance. And then there's a public tree maintenance program. And the public tree maintenance basically says Public Works or their designee can take care of what needs to happen. There's some clear zone requirements and some safety requirements. But it also has, gives us a little bit of teeth if there are issues on private property that are creating a safety hazard or concern. We have the ability to, we make contact with them. We ask them to take care of the problem. And then if they don't, we do have the ability to take care of the problem and then essentially bill them for it. So it does codify some of that if we have things that are in the rights of way or that are also on private property. It also mirrors our tree preservation standards. If, if we are going to do tree preservation, there are certain, some certain things that should be followed, some protections that should be in place. So it mirrors that, what we have in the site plan ordinance. And then it establishes some provisions creating heritage trees and talking about what those might be. So in summary, the ordinance applies to town-owned properties and rights of way. It assigns administration duties to the town arborist and public works department. It establishes the framework for creating the tree care advisory board. It establishes public landscape standards, public maintenance standards. It establishes protections when tree preservation is proposed and establishes qualifications for heritage trees. The proposed next step, if you all choose to move this forward, it would go to Town Council Public Hearing on November 5th. And then on the 19th or on the 5th could be second reading. That would put this ordinance into place and then we would work with public, I would work with Public Works to pass this off to Community Services and Public Works. And then they would begin tracking their expenditures and their current budget. Basically, we would be at the, for Tree City USA, that's a little bit different. But we already have a line item for the things that they are doing. It would just need to be captured. And then establish the board and staff liaison, probably early spring, summer 2026, not me. Small Arbor Day celebration plan for maybe later in the year. And then we could, as soon as next November, apply for the Tree City USA designation. With that, I am available for questions.
Thank you, Autumn. Does anyone have questions? Yes, Scott.
One, because you said that you'd be able to, if it's on private property, you'd be able to take care of it and then build a person. But you said it's only gonna be on town property.
Well, it would, so the language is no property owner shall allow a tree or other plant growing on their property to obstruct or interfere with pedestrians or the view of drivers, thereby creating a nuisance or hazard. If an obstruction persists, the town arborist shall notify the property owners to broon or remove the tree or plant. If the owner fails to comply with the notice, the town may undertake the necessary work and charge the cost to the property owner.
Okay, so if it's intruding on town property?
Right. If it's creating a nuisance situation, a safety, not just, it doesn't look good. It would be a legitimate safety concern.
Okay.
Yes.
I think the town should just take care of it though. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Autumn? Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So move.
Any council discussion? Yeah, Counsel Anderson and then Counsel Shoup.
Yeah, I, I support this. I think it's great. I, I do just want to say though, I, I know there's been conversation about tree protection as well. And that is something that I hope the next council, again, as part of our growth conversations continues to explore. I really like the notion of tree protection and commercial development that I think Autumn mentioned during our workshop. So in my mind, that's really about ensuring that as we grow, that we try and protect as many trees as we can. And I think that's good. I don't think that's necessary for this tonight. I think this is a very different purpose, but I think this is a good thing to be doing.
Thank you.
I want to thank Autumn for bringing this forward and for the suggestion of becoming a tree city. She had to talk me down because I was very upset about all the clear cutting across town and just want to ban it everywhere. But I realized that's not really realistic or fair. And so I think this is a good way to take a step back and say, you know, we're gonna practice this on our own properties. And then we're gonna, I think it's a great advertisement of Scarborough about what our priorities are. And this is a step to become a tree city. And I think that's a great goal that I, I think we should be able to meet.
Thank you. Counsel Fellowes?
Thank you. Yes, I also support this. And to the comments about tree protection, we did have a little bit of discussion, which Counselor Shoup initiated at ordinance around the, the notion of having more of a conversation going forward about clear cutting and timber harvesting or just cutting in general, and certainly open to having that. I will say, having been on the other side of things, both in Scarborough and in the city of Portland, that we do need to be mindful of the fact that sometimes, you know, there are a lot of examples of this dynamic where we have a couple of different well-intentioned sets of requirements which occasionally come into conflict. So tree, tree protection and parking requirements, for example, would be an obvious one. Maybe not obvious, but certainly one that does come up in my experience in commercial areas. So I just want to make sure that we're conscious of that. But I do support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Scott. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna be, I've changed mine. I think I'm gonna be opposed to this because government starts down this trail and they're already talking about it and pushing it further. And I want the homeowners to have, again, homeowners should have their rights to do what they want. It'd probably be a good thing for just, I'm already saying they're gonna charge a fee for somebody if they need a tree cut. So I'm gonna be against it. Stop it now.
Thank you. I am gonna be in support of this tonight. I think that one of the things that we are charged with as a council is to reflect the values of our community. This is something that is important to our community members. And I, you know, I saw some of the comments on Facebook, on our town page that were suggesting that maybe this was just a token and that we let developers do whatever they want. But now we're gonna ha-ha be a tree city. And, and I'm gonna push back on that. First of all, I, I think comments like that on our town Facebook page are incredible discredit to our amazing staff. But in addition, I, I don't know how to advance a better agenda if we're gonna be criticized for trying to advance a better agenda. And so for that reason, I think that this is a step in the right direction. I think that this does reflect our community's desires. And so I am, I'm in support of this. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes 6-1. Uh, where are we? Order number 25-101. Act on the request from the Sustainability Manager to accept the vulnerability assessment as presented on August 20th, 2025. Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for prolonging your meeting to take up this.
I did that just for you.
So as the, the intro mentioned, this is a follow-up to the, the, I'm sorry, it's late. The workshop in August where the vulnerability assessment was presented to you all. And so just to, for a brief, high-level overview and reminder, the assessment is intended to be a planning tool that helps the town prioritize roads, areas, and other infrastructure to help guide our decision-making in regards to infrastructure projects, ordinance revisions, capital investments, and funding applications. For all of the recommendations that are outlined in the vulnerability assessment will require additional planning, modeling, engineering, and/or community engagement in order to implement those recommendations. So this really is kind of the first step for Scarborough in terms of identifying where our flood risks are, where they likely will be in the future, and how we're going to begin addressing them. Since public comment was made earlier, I want to speak to a couple of the comments that were made and just provide some clarification. First off, that the, the comment about items missing from the story map, and we've been directing people to the story map. We realized this week that we were having technical issues making updates to the story map. We're working with Esri, who hosts the story map, to under, to figure out what's going on because we're not able to publish changes. So recognizing that documents hadn't been posted yet and weren't made available, they're, they are on the town website so that they are available there. They'll remain there as well as at, in the story map. They may be easier to find on the vulnerability assessment page of the, the town website because they are in one location on that page, whereas on the story map, they're kind of sprinkled throughout based on where they fit within the information that's being presented in the map. The concept plans that were developed for Higgins Beach, just want to clarify that the town at this point doesn't have any plans to move forward implementing the, the, the concept designs that were pulled together. They were intended as a point of talking with DEP so that we have a better understanding of what they will allow and what their rules allow, what they're able to permit. If we do decide to move forward with a project at Higgins Beach, we've been talking for years with DEP about Bayview Avenue and concerns there and have not gotten a straightforward answer. So our consultants recommended that we pull together some general concepts so that we can have a, a good discussion with DEP about what those plans are showing and what they would allow. So posted in addition to the plans are also a set of clarifying questions that we've asked, asked DEP to respond to. They were provided to DEP in August and we haven't gotten a response back. So responses will be posted once they become available. And then just lastly, speaking to the elevation standards that are recommended, those are specifically outlined in the homeowner's adaptation guide that was developed for Pine Point. And there, it's a multi-step process. Identifying which FEMA zone you're in, identifying if you're in a mapped coastal sand dune. Are you in a frontal dune? Are you in a back dune? So those are regulations set by the federal government and the state government. And unfortunately, there's not an easy way for the town to kind of set the standard because we are beholden to the federal regulations and the state regulations. So in there, there is a, a note to say, call your, call the code enforcement officer because our staff in code enforcement are well-trained and have a lot of background and are able to answer the questions. And if they can't answer the questions, they know where to navigate to so that they will be able to find the, the responses. So I'm going to fully acknowledge that the vulnerability assessment is a very technical document. This is a very complex issue. And so like I said, it's the first step to the town becoming more flood resilient and addressing our, our critical infrastructure. And it's a tool that I use pretty much every day as part of my job. And I think that others in town are also going to begin to use it much more frequently as well because so many of our roads, we have 30 roads that are vulnerable to flooding now or will be in the near future. So it's a tool that we're going to be using very, very often. I'm happy to answer questions. And thank you very much for, for your interest and for the capital improvement funds to complete this process.
Thank you, Jamie. Does anyone have questions for Jamie? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So move.
Council discussion? Counsel Anderson?
I'm tired.
That's okay.
But, but I do want to say, great job to Jamie and the team that worked on this. This is really, I view this as like the final study that we need, maybe minus the sidewalk study that's coming. But, but I feel like the town has done a lot of studying and I think we now have all of these components. And Autumn alluded to how at our next workshop on growth, we're gonna kind of be looking at all of those. And I think this is a key element, especially as we think about prioritizing our, our resources and thinking about growth. So again, just kudos to staff for all the work that has been done for this and all of our other, other work that's kind of gotten us to this point. I'm excited to kind of dig into it and then figure out what we do about it.
Other council comment? Counsel Kane?
I'll read what Counselor Anderson said. And, and, but even more so to Jamie, Autumn, and Angela. And, um, and, but even more so to Jamie, Autumn, uh, and Angela for running some community meetings out in the affected neighborhoods. They were well-attended. It is deep, detailed information and they did a great job trying to disseminate that. And I look forward to continuing that conversation and, and making sure that the public is aware of the, the risks and the solutions. And it's been a very effective process so far.
Other council comment?
Uh, it was, it was a pleasure to be the liaison to this committee. Unlike some of our other studies, which maybe feel a little bit farther removed from our public, this one really hits close to home for a lot of people. And so I'm very appreciative and grateful for the council approving the funds to get that done. And obviously to our professional staff for being willing to digest all of that information and then their willingness to meet with our residents and help them to understand what the implications of this vulnerability study are going to mean, not just for the next couple of years, but into the long term. And so I think that this is really outstanding and that our residents are really going to benefit and appreciate this work for a long time.
With that, I will go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor? I show that is unanimous. Thank you. Order number twenty-five dash one oh two is act on the request to discuss the proposed discontinuance of the portion of Sawyer Street in the Spurwink Marsh. Adopt the order of discontinuance and file it with the town clerk and schedule a public hearing for November fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to think of a way to succinctly introduce this matter. It's certainly not lost on me the fact that this, this item follows the acceptance of the vulnerability study. This stretch of road is, is in fact noted as one of the thirty that was mentioned. We are presented with what I call as a unique opportunity. Not many times in my professional career has the, the least cost alternative also likely been the best environmental alternative. In this case, the town was approached really by the Town of Cape Elizabeth, who's, who's taken the lead on this project, starting all the way back in two thousand eighteen. So this project's been around, at least at the staff level, for seven years. Really for three years, quite formally and officially in front of council. Some of you participated in joint meetings with your colleagues in Cape. And we've kind of methodically gone through this process. Where we find ourselves tonight is, um, is really at the end of that process. And that is to consider the formal discontinuance of a portion of Sawyer Street. This was always contemplated to be the final piece. It is a bit of a, a, a final or fatal process that cannot be undone. And so it only makes sense for it to be the, the final piece. I would note that your colleagues in Cape Elizabeth have considered a similar matter on their agenda this evening. I, I'm not aware of what the outcome of that, those proceedings were. But effectively, uh, this process is controlled very, uh, very directly by state statute that prescribes the process for discontinuance. Essentially this evening, uh, you were to entertain a discussion whether you want to pursue it. If so, the notice or order of discontinuance is filed with the town clerk. And you schedule a public hearing and then there'll be a final vote. At this point, it's scheduled for November nineteenth, but that can certainly be modified at your will. Again, as I said at the beginning, fundamentally, this is really about cost avoidance. The culvert alone, by our best estimates, is a two million dollar investment or, or expense. How we share that with our, with Cape Elizabeth is yet to be decided, but there are certainly significant costs that is considered. That's not to mention any improvements to the road that we may choose to do. And then beyond that, I, I think it just conveniently happens to be, uh, uh, you know, a tremendously good option for the environment in terms of restoring the marsh in all of its, uh, its splendor and, and capabilities. So again, uh, the, the fairly narrow matter before you this evening is whether you wish to initiate the discontinuance process.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Certainly, I saw more than a few hands, so we will just queue up and we will go until everyone has had their say. Thank you.
Good evening. Cressy Mauer, twenty Meeting House Road in Scarborough. I'm also a member of the Conservation Committee. I just want to hope that you do approve this project. It demonstrates leadership in the climate arena, is fiscally smart, and leverages state funds to, to benefit our town. And it's going to pursue a strategic partnership with Cape Elizabeth. The project aligns perfectly with our vulnerability assessment, as you just pointed out. It's going to, uh, which has helped Scarborough make some very hard choices and, and prioritization of what roads we really want to defend in, in the face of sea level rise. And I'll say that Sawyer Street doesn't cut it. We have public safety routes that need to be defended and this is a small road for, uh, you know, a, a limited number of our residents. Unfortunately, uh, having attended the Cape Elizabeth Town Council meeting last week on this subject, it looks like it's going to fail in Cape Elizabeth. I don't know that for certain, but it looks like the, um, you know, they're listening to the interests of a very few people to defend that road. I hope, I urge you not to lose sight of the fact that Scarborough, Cape Elizabeth will receive one and a half, nearly one and a half million dollars to remove a street that will cost millions to defend against sea level rise. It, it just doesn't make any sense fiscally. And it will also fund actions to restore Spurwink Marsh so that it can keep up with and adapt to sea level rise. So, you know, this is, this is a two, this is a win-win. It's a two-for. You know, we're going to be saving taxpayer money and saving an incredible marsh. So as I say, please be fiscally and environmentally strategic. Use taxpayer monies to serve the wider good, not the defense of one street for a small number of residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Gobber. I live at, on Colthard Farms Road. I wasn't really aware that this closure was going to happen until I received a letter from Mr. McCall in the mail at the end of the summer. And, um, I think he, as in a butter to this property, he wanted, he wants to keep the road open. But as I looked at the map that he sent that shows my home, I realized that it's actually the sea level rise that is a threat to my property. And I'm thinking that this, um, road in no way is going to prevent the sea level from rising. I'm assuming I'm correct in that, that it doesn't provide any barrier to protecting my home. And so knowing that the town has an opportunity here to save some money and we have so many other projects with, that require taxpayer money, I'm thinking it's absolutely not prudent to maintain this road. I do understand, I listened to the meeting online that discussed this, that people have a lot of sentimental feelings about it. But the sea is going to take something, whether you like it or not. And I'm no feeling badly about it is difficult. But, you know, sentiment can't real, can't really come into play here when we don't have a choice. The sea is going to do what it wants. So anyway, thank you so much for serving on the council and, um, good luck with the decision.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Roger Hale. I lived at two sixty-four Broad Turn Road since nineteen seventy. I'm one of the old folks in town. Look, uh, I'll touch on two or three things here. First, the historic value of this road. This, this road has been here for hundreds of years. And, and, you know, other than sentimental, it's a beautiful drive out through there. This town has spent exactly nothing on it last year. And, um, and it's still there. It's kind of like the bridge when the, the oil tanker hit it. The bridge was condemned. It couldn't stand. But the oil tanker hit it, the bridge stood and the tanker had a big hole in it when, when they had the big oil spill in Portland. This, this road is very durable. It's been there for all these years. It was built with Scots. Our forefathers worked and toiled, um, to build this road. And, and I, I think just like Union Station and some of the other landmarks that have been taken away, it's a big mistake to take this out. Then as a contractor, I'll point out to you that this is going to cost a lot of money. And to take this out safely, you'd almost have to sheet pile the whole peninsula as you took it out to, to keep the settlements from washing back and forth over the marsh. I, I don't think anybody's really considered what's in this road. Road construction has changed over the years, but there's all kinds of materials in here, coal tower epoxies and whatever that they used to pave roads in, in, in the twenties and thirties that are mixed in. Right now it's capsulated with hot top. And it's not washing into the marsh. But as you disturb Pandora's Box, when you open this can of worms, you're going to get a, a goo. And it's got to be transported through our towns dribbling out of the trucks. You know, I, I'm trying to emphasize what really happens. And we're all going to live with the goo that you're going to try and take out of here. It's best to leave the road just like it is and leave it right there. I think you're opening an awful can of worms and money too because disposing of the material, we don't even know what it is. There, there's been very little effort in this project other than it, it's, it's kind of been like a Rachel Carlson shoot-ready aim project. And it's been a rush to get this through. It's taken a long time from to get grants and whatnot. But, uh, I really think, I really think you're making a big mistake by taking this road out. And it's going to be a costly mistake to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Good evening, councilors. Good evening, everybody. My name's Abel Plod, twelve-second Av, and I'm also on the Conservation Commission with Cressy. I am, of course, in support of removing, uh, the Spurwink Road and moving forward. Sorry, not Spurwink Road, the Sawyer Road and moving forward with the project. Over the years, Scarborough has done a lot of development and there's been a lot of concerns of just lost wetlands and lost habitat. You know, my understanding is by removing and restoring about three-quarters of an acre of a road, it could essentially reconnect and kind of reestablish and improve the quality of about sixty-two acres of saltwater marsh, which is very sensitive and premium ecological standpoint. It does a lot of good for the community. It's beautiful. Part of the sentimental issue is that people love being there, but they love driving through it. And, you know, sometimes those things are a little bit in conflict. So I understand why people want to be able to be close to it as it is. But I think it could do a lot more good if we were to restore it and give it the ability to do what it does naturally. My understanding of the costs is we're, uh, discussed before. It could cost anywhere from two to five million dollars to repair the road if needed. But also that would likely, you know, damage the road even, or damage the marsh even more because to bring it up code, you'd have to widen it, you'd have to impede more on the marsh itself. And additionally, that wouldn't protect it from actual flooding. So even though things we're experiencing now, you know, that would just be to kind of get it back to an okay state. I, I agree. I think, you know, Scarborough and Cape Elizabeth have both been given an opportunity really unique to be able to, you know, both contribute about two hundred thousand dollars to obtain a one-point-five-million-dollar grant to, you know, restore a, a beautiful part of the town. You know, I think by choosing to remove the road, we're making a financially prudent decision. We'd be making the best conservation and ecological decision we can. And I think it would be a win-win for all three parties, Cape Elizabeth and Scarborough and the marsh itself. I know it's a tough decision, you know, I hope that this helps, you know, with everybody's feedback. You have to do all the balancing, but, um, you know, thank you for reconsideration. I hope you think to move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Brenda Harrison, one ninety-one Spurwink Road. I feel like it's a mute point, but I'm here. I want to save the road because it's been there my whole life. And my family go back to the sixteen forty-four, so they probably helped build it. But the biggest problem I have is the transparency that's been going on that if this really started back in two thousand seventeen, or what I'm hearing, I get my first letter twenty-twenty-five and I live around the corner. And that's, we would have been up here vocal more often. And I don't see any road repair. I do see the people who use the road. I see the bikers and the walkers. And I don't know what the impact's going to be on my house when, uh, the roads get, when the road goes or the trans, the, the, everybody going different, the traffic other ways. I know what it was like having the water main broke on Spurwink Road the other day. In order for me to get to a meeting up on Black Point Road, I had to go Sawyer Road, Sawyer Street, Thicket, down to Highland Avenue. And if much happens, and I know, I only live two miles of Scarborough. I, I'm eleven houses from Cape Elizabeth, so I should be in Cape. But, um, it'd be sad for us to lose it. And I see busloads of kids, the, the Cape Elizabeth schools take their busloads of kids and pack on Sawyer Road and take them on the marsh. And when this happens, I feel like it's going to happen. It sounds like it's a done deal. But you're not going to even have access to the, that area. The, the people walk across it. There's people painting and everything. And from everything I hear, I go to the Cape Elizabeth meetings, I've been here, and no one is going to have access to that area, other than you can sit on the edge. And I just think it's a big loss for all of us. And if, if it's been here three hundred and fifty years, if we had maintained it and taken care of it, I can't believe that it would be in this situation. And I think you just made a decision that it was a non-essential road because it's at the end of Scarborough and not enough residents use it. But we do, so I would like to see it stay.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for being here late this evening. My name is Nat Thompson. I'm currently renting at seven Ram Island Farm Road in Cape Elizabeth, but I live at two twenty-one Spurwink Road, right next to the bridge across from the put-in for the boat launch. I too would not like to see this road removed. I think it was a little bit of fait accompli that the funds were found to remove the road. But I think that there may be funds available to repair the road. I have been involved with some of the restoration projects in Western Maine where they've replaced undersized culverts with open bottom bridges that allowed the river to maintain its normal course. And I think that if that were done at that section of road, there would be an alleviation of the flooding that goes over the road. Right now, we have sort of an hourglass shape where that bridge crosses or the culvert is. And I think that that would be eliminated if we had an open bottom culvert or an open bottom bridge in that section. And then we reduce back down to this, to the part of the marsh that is lower on the Scarborough side. Anyway, I am sorry to see that you're considering this. I know that people who are budding the bridge, probably having a thousand cars less per day go past their house, I can understand why they might want to have the road closed. But I would rather not see a thousand more cars a day going past my property. And lastly, I think you want to be careful what you wish for if you are in a butter because I think if there are going to be three parking spaces on either side, I think that's what's proposed, the turnaround for that is going to be problematic. Living across from the boat launch presently, I can tell you that there's a lot more going on in that parking area than launching boats. So I think you should be concerned about what may take place in those parking areas at night and other times. I just, I'm opposed to it. I'm, the marsh is my front yard and the marsh is my backyard and I care deeply about the marsh. I too am sort of have mixed emotions about removing this road. But I think for convenience and selfishly, I would like to see the road remain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys are killing me tonight. Denise Hamilton, Two Rod Road. Couple of people approached me and sent me down a rabbit hole of research. Couple of people approached me and sent me down a rabbit hole of research. My research has taken a lot of time to gather facts available to the public. I'm here to express concern that the town may not have adhered to the required procedures before accepting the $1.59 million grant from the Maine Natural Resource Conservation Program for the Spurwink Marsh Restoration Project, which includes the closure of Sawyer Street. According to MNRCP's guidelines, before funding is awarded, a project must demonstrate, and I quote, "local support and municipal approval." End of quote. The application process typically requires documentation showing that the municipality, the taxpayers are aware of and support the proposed project, especially when it affects a public way. MNRCP explicitly states that it will not fund projects that require actions, such as closing a road that have not been properly authorized under state or municipal law. In practice, this means that the town should have held public informational meetings, secured town council endorsement, and completed the statutory public hearing and discontinuance vote before the grant was awarded. However, the timeline indicates that there is a joint town council workshop with Cape Elizabeth held in March of '22 with full Scarborough council and only a couple of Cape town council members and staff from both Scarborough and Cape. The meeting lasted about 45 minutes and a handful of public comment from residents on or around Sawyer Street. The grant was awarded in fall of '23. $90,000 of the $1.59 million was released after the submission and approval of an interim status report sometime before April of '25. The first Scarborough Town Council Workshop occurred in January, on January 17, 2024. The memorandum of understanding with Cape was signed in May of '24. The first public informational meeting was held on September 24, 2025. Regarding the March 16, '22 joint hybrid meeting, it appears public notice was sent only to residents Sawyer Street. I want to stress that this proposed road closure affects far more than just those homes. Traffic patterns, access, and interests of many Scarborough taxpayers are at stake. So limiting notice to one street falls short of ensuring proper community involvement. All residents impacted by this project deserve to be informed and heard. This sequence suggests the town committed to a project involving the closure of a public road before all residents were well informed or had an opportunity to provide input in a public setting. Given this timeline and MNRCP's requirements, it appears that the town may not have met the necessary procedural steps before accepting the grant. I respectfully urge the council to review whether the town complied with the guidelines and statutory requirements before accepting the grant, although it would appear it's already been accepted since you've received a small payout. If compliance hasn't been met, the town should pause further commitments until further, until full compliance and genuine public participation are ensured. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Do I have a motion?
So ma'am.
Counsel discussion. Yeah, Karen, thank you.
I can't speak to the process. You know, I've been on the council for three years. I participated in a workshop. I, I will say that I trust our staff, that we have followed the process legally, but I think I'll leave it at that. I think what I can speak to as someone who's sat on the finance committee for the last three years and gone through the budget process, it's a really tough process to go through, and there's a lot of competing problems in the town. And every year we have to choose what the priorities are, and we don't want to spend all of your taxpayer money, and we have to make tough choices. And so when you have larger roads with higher traffic counts that have bigger issues that we need to address, I think the decision for me was, you know, we have to prioritize in this town and this just, we have so many bigger issues. And so while I appreciate what this road, the purpose that it serves, I just, I think I'm concerned about, well, I understand it's going to be maybe $2 million to put a, put a bigger culvert in, but that's just the culvert. I don't know the long, that's just, that's just today. I mean, we don't know what it's going to look like in 20 years, you know? And I think the alternative that we're discussing right now is kind of a one-time. We know that we have to spend some money to remove a road, and then we will no longer be incurring the expense of a road that goes through our marsh. So I support this because I think, again, we have bigger priorities and we have people who are struggling to afford to live in our town. And I just can't justify, I think, spending so much money on a road that doesn't have the high traffic counts as compared, as appeared, compared to other roads in town. Obviously, I'm a big advocate for the marsh, so, you know, restoring the marsh to its natural state, I think, is a priority for me. I appreciate that people like to use the road as a viewing place, but I think we've done a good job between our two communities to create lots of places along the marsh and the resources to, to have a view that's not on a road, that's not next to someone's home, legally parking and things like that. And so I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Other counsel comment? Counsel Anderson?
Yeah, I, I think Counselor, my brain.
Yeah, we're all going to be tongue-tied, I think.
I'm going to have to try hard. I think Counselor Shoup said it perfectly. I think, you know, I think based on the vulnerability assessment, we know we have other parts of town that we really need to invest in in terms of vulnerability that are just frankly higher priorities. So the reality is this road will continue to get flooded, continue to get subsumed, continue to get damaged, continue to cost money. And so I, I do think that it's the most fiscally prudent thing to do in order to give it back to the marsh and, and restore the marsh for this. I also think allowing for the marsh migration, my understanding from the experts is may actually protect the homeowners by allowing that marsh to migrate and prevent, you know, I forget what, how it was described in the FAQ, but basically it protects those homeowners that are nearby. So I think that's important for those abutting homeowners. I do totally feel for the residents who have lived here for a very long time, who have used that road a lot. You know, my, my personal connection to that road is I take that road every year as part of our family tradition to get our Christmas tree at the, the Christmas tree farm off of Sawyer Road. The very first time we did that, I didn't put the tree all the way on the car correctly, and it actually fell in the Spurwink marsh. So every time we drive by that, I always think about the time the Christmas tree fell in the marsh and my little children were screaming as I'm like screaming because of the trees like falling off the roof. So it will always have a special place in my heart. And I, I think it will have a special place in everybody's heart if, if the decision is to discontinue and restore it back. So I really think that, you know, financially, it's the right thing to do. And as, as everybody has said environmentally, it's the right thing to do. I understand the inconvenience it may play in terms of traffic movement. And again, I, I've heard the arguments made about our complete streets policy and how we are always trying to make sure that we have that interconnectivity. I feel like in this part of town, there is enough interconnectivity, both on the Cape side and on the Scarborough side, that allows for appropriate traffic movement. I do think the Cape Council has a lot more to contend with in terms of traffic on their roads that I don't think are as prevalent an issue on our side of town. And so I totally would understand being in their position, how this is definitely a tougher, tougher decision. But I, I think it's just common sense, the right thing to do, given, you know, other investment priorities and preserving the marsh.
Thank you. Counsel Kane, and then Counsel Fellows.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Shoup's comments on prioritizing. I think that's a great point and will come to pass quicker than we'd all like. John, to your points about the flooding is that, what I read out of that is that leaving the road does not protect the upstream side from tidal events. But removing the road may improve flooding for more rain events that are then downstream. The other part of this I like is there's, there's a very significant revegetation plan built into this to, you know, replenish the, the marsh and all. That would actually happen before the removal of the road. And for those reasons, I'm, I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I fully appreciate the, the perspectives of the folks in, in, in that area who don't want to see this road abandoned, both due to historical attachments and just traffic, traffic circulation. And I, and I completely get the, you know, the, the inconvenience of what happened with the, the water main break. But that's just one of those things that happens. I mean, we had a water main break in the middle of the summer on a busy beach day toward the end of Pine Point Road. And I, you know, members of my family took an hour and a half to get home. I, I think that's just, that sort of is what it is. I think that, you know, it's really, as I've said before, it's really important that we all serve at large on this council. And so it never feels great when, when, when members of the public are sounding as if they feel maybe neglected or overlooked or short-changed. And so again, I completely understand those, those perspectives. But to me, the end of the day, this does feel like a win-win, big picture wise. I mean, the two things that we hear the most, at least since I've been on the council, are protect our marshes, be fiscally responsible. And this checks both of those boxes for me. And again, it's very apropos. This is coming right after the vulnerability assessment discussion. And there is language in that that talks about, you know, it sounds kind of warlike, but defend and retreat. And, and sometimes you have to retreat. That's just the reality we're facing. It's happening whether we, whether we like it or, or believe it. So we're going to have to pick our spots. And as others have said, we have a lot of competing priorities. And so I think this is the right call. Thanks.
Thanks. I'm going to, I will weigh in. I, I also have full faith in the process that we followed. I trust that our staff gave council the appropriate guidance along the way. My recollection of public engagement is slightly different than some of the comments we heard this evening, just in that I do feel like we had a really robust several meetings. We took a lot of public comment from people who had been notified. There was some reflection done during one of those meetings that maybe not enough people had been notified. And then, so then moving forward, we did expand our list of people that were notified to include people that were further up Spurwink Road. My grampy lives at 203 Spurwink Road. You can see the end of Sawyer Street from his driveway. And I know that I'm going to be wildly unpopular in the event that this passes because that road means something to the people who have lived on Spurwink their whole lives. And I am certainly not insensitive to that. There is something really moving about how deeply people feel about the change that they see all around Scarborough. And so my heart definitely goes out to people who look around and feel like they're losing something or that they don't recognize where they used to live or where they, they grew up and raised their children. The reality is, is that this is a really difficult decision for a council to make. We not, I don't think any of us are taking it lightly. But we have so many other competing priorities that whether we talk about a more reasonable solution that would fix the road or not, we still need to attach a fiscal note to that decision. And so for me, it's not really about finding a better solution or that we just abandoned this and gave up on trying to find a better solution. For me, it's that it's out of the scope of what we can prioritize in terms of where our funds need to go. And so for that reason, I am going to support this tonight. I also think that for the health of the marsh, I, I can't imagine that it is better for the road to be there. I don't, I don't think that the marsh benefits from the road being there. And, and so I think that there will certainly be benefits of removing the road in terms of the health of the marsh. And so for me, it's been said, I think this is a win-win. But I, I don't take it lightly, and I, and I do feel for those residents that feel like this is a loss. Scott?
Yeah. Yeah, sentiment of value. I think there's other options. You know, you can just leave it just the way it is. And if it's unsafe for a vehicle to go across, then just block it off. And then it can just be a pedestrian thing for people to walk across. You don't have to spend any money, you know? Just it is what it is. That's one option. Another option, a real big option that hasn't been discussed yet is what if Cape decides that they're going to keep the road? What's going to happen then? I mean, are we going to, what happens? If they want to keep it, they pay for it all? You know, I don't know.
Yeah, Tom, sure.
Yeah, I can't answer that definitively. I can say that council leadership and staff met with our counterparts in Cape just last Thursday, following their last public meeting. Counselor Anderson, to his credit, raised that question specifically and said, you know, we are, if we're ready, willing, and able to move this forward, and you're not, are you willing to accept the financial responsibility? And of course, it was a question that they were not empowered to answer either. So it's a bit uncertain, but in no uncertain terms, that expectation was certainly floated their way. And I hope it was represented as much in their discussions this evening. I think, I don't know the outcome of their vote, but should they choose not to move forward, I think we'll have to reevaluate our position.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to reiterate too. A lot of these votes are very difficult for us. And I've said it in the past, and they say, well, this is how it is. We have to make the decision. But I think that we should have at least five to 10 referendum issues every November. And we don't make it. This is something that should go to the voters. You know, a lot of these things, the bond, the land trust thing went to the voters. Voters decided whether we were going to do that. And a lot of these things, I think, should go to the voter, you know? I mean, even the Marshview thing. I mean, I think it was very clear that majority in town didn't want it. But they say, oh, there was only 100 people. Well, let's just let it go to referendum then. I think we should do more of that. I think that's, when we come to these decisions like that, I think when we get to a point like this, it should be a vote to say, you know what? We don't know. We're just going to send it to referendum. But, so there's another option for you.
Thank you. Other counsel comment? All set? Okay, I will call the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Item 10 is non-action items. Item 11 is council member comments. Counsel Anderson?
I have things to say.
Always count on you for a good time.
Well, first I want to share, I went to Eight Corners yesterday for the tour. So I would, I would encourage everybody to try and go to a tour on, on the primary schools or the middle school if you have time. My children went to Eight Corners, and it's been two years since I've been there and going and seeing the condition that it's in and the, the crowding of all the material that was in the hallways. And yes, when you go in the bathrooms, they really do have storage in there. Some more than others, but nonetheless, there is storage there. So I just hope the community will take advantage. It was, to me, it's, it's very disappointing to go into these schools. And it's, it's definitely credit to the staff and especially Todd Jepson and the facilities crew there who really kind of keep the upkeep of these buildings so that the schools can function. But man, like, everybody should go see those for themselves because they, we should all be embarrassed when we look at the, the position we put ourselves in with our schools. So I do hope people consider voting yes for the schools this November. The other thing, to get a little political, is we do have another thing that we're voting on this November on the state ballot around secure elections. And really what I see this as is a way to create barriers for individuals to vote. And again, I think it's important that we don't create barriers for people, especially our seniors, which I think this inadvertently affects the most. And so I would encourage everybody to read up on question one on the ballot and, you know, hopefully join me in voting no on question one.
Corey, thank you. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Just going back to the marsh theme, just a public service announcement that as you folks may have seen on signs around town, the fall marsh cleanup is Saturday morning, starting at nine. Typically, people meet at the Marsh Audubon Center on Pine Point Road. And they
And they sort of fan out from there around various parts of the marsh along the roads and, and down to a couple of the beaches. It also serves as an opportunity to have volunteers help with kind of closing up the, the Audubon Center for the winter. So again, kind of in the spirit of protecting and valuing our marsh, I would encourage people to do that. It's, I've done it a lot. I've done it several times, including with my kids when they were younger. And it's, you know, it's a mix because it's, it's pretty sobering to see how much stuff is in the marsh and along the side of the road. And we all see it when we drive. But when you, when you're filling up trash bags and creating piles of debris on the side of the road to be picked up by VPW, it's pretty sobering, but it's also invigorating to, to see the difference and to see people in the community volunteering to, to help out with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Other counsel comment? Oh, John has one more. Sorry.
Well, I, I just, I just got this text from somebody. When I, I know we're not supposed to look at our phones, but I thought we were wrapping up, so I put out my phone. I just wanted to share that they said, wow, very fascinating meeting tonight and not just the STR issue. I think that's the best open dialogue I've ever seen a full council engage in with respectful disagreement. April should be very proud. And though I just want to thank April for her role as chair and the environment and culture that you created because I think it was a great meeting tonight. The public comment was, was amazing. We all do take your feedback seriously and take our roles very seriously. And I do think tonight, I think, was a good meeting where it's okay to agree to disagree. And, you know, there were things that I wanted to happen tonight that didn't happen and things that I'm sure some of you wanted that didn't happen. But tomorrow's another day and there's gonna be more things that we're gonna have to work through. And I, I'm looking forward to working with you guys on it.
Thanks. Oh, Lord. Okay. Well, I, I'm not done because I have counsel comments. So, so the last thing I want to do is, is drag anybody down. And I've been churning at how to turn this into a positive. And so this is the best I can come up with at 11:10 at night is we are all on the same team. And when I say we, I mean the staff, the council, the school board, the community. And it is reasonable that we interpret different situations differently, that we disagree with outcomes and that we remain civil and assume positive intent. And I was just really disappointed by some social media that I saw coming into the meeting tonight that casts aspersions on our colleagues on the school board. I, I don't think that that is necessary. I don't think it's relevant to productive conversation. And I think that we can all reasonably disagree or agree about certain issues while remaining civil and, and showing people positive intent and respect. And so I hope that as we get closer to referendum, that our community will continue to make me proud and continue to acknowledge that we are all on the same team. And so with that, I hope that, you know, we can just, we can keep things positive. I also have a huge thank you to say. A few weeks ago, I may have subtly hinted that I would like some champagne cupcakes from one of our very accomplished bakers in town. And she happily obliged and dropped off cupcakes for me this evening. And so to Ms. Paula O'Brien, thank you so much for my cupcakes and for indulging me. So it, I just am really grateful. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Thank you. I almost asked.